Good morning. The time is now nine oh two on Wednesday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. I call this open meeting of the Lexington Select Board to order. Today's meeting will be conducted in person. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available for future on demand viewing by Lex Media. All the tiers provided to members of the board have also been made available to the public. Members of the board are in person this morning. I'm Doug Lucenti, the Select Board Chair. On my right is Joe Pato. On his right is Vice Chair Jill Hay. On my left is Susie Barry. On her left is Mark Sandin. And joining us from staff in the room, we have several members of senior management team coming in. And we have Kim Katzenbach, our executive clerk, who will be helping us today facilitate this meeting. Colleagues, we did have on our agenda an executive session per the recommendation and suggestion of our town council. The purpose of that executive session would be to discuss any applicants that have come forward. If there's anything we need to talk to, I don't see any need to have the executive session unless someone would like to make a motion that we go into executive session. I don't think we have anything specific to discuss. Okay, seeing no purpose for that, we will leave that on the agenda for the entirety of the meeting. In case there's an opportunity where we do want to go into executive session. Okay. So today is obviously a significant step in our search for a new town manager as we conduct the public interviews with three exceptional candidates. And I first want to thank the Town Manager Search Screening Committee and the members of that committee, which include Robert Mandeville, Helen Yang, Heather Hartshorn, Vinita Kumar, Sarah Bothwell Allen, Robert Creach, Janet Perry, our two Select Board members, Mark Sandin, and the Chair of that Jill Hay, as well as the two liaisons from the Finance Committee, Sean Osborne and Charles Lamb. And our first item on the agenda before the interviews is for the board to review the process and the questions that we will be asking the candidates. Colleagues in front of you are the questions that we are planning to ask. This list was compiled based on the information that we had gathered at our recent retreat with John Wortman. Ms. Hay and I did our best to create questions that address the topics raised by the board members. We also tried very hard not to repeat questions that were given through the essay responses. So I'd like everyone to take a moment to please read through them. We have a half hour. Maybe we won't take that long, but if there are questions or comments or recommendations for changes, now would be the time that I'm going to give everybody sort of a moment. Do some reading.
How do you want to handle this?
So I want to make sure, I want to make sure everybody said an opportunity to look at the questions. Like we tried very hard to go line by line of what we talked about with John to make sure that things were incorporated either in here or in the essays. So.
Do you want me to review John's next?
I was, I was going to go over what the plan was and then you can, you can talk about that. So we have. And go through the process and then talk about the questions additionally. So we have three interviews today. Our nine thirty interview is Margot Fleischman, eleven o'clock Steve Arthur, twelve thirty Tony Mizuko. So we're going to conduct sixty minute interviews with the candidate. We're going to tell them that they have five minutes to answer each question. We will rotate these questions among board members. And after each interview, we're going to take a break between the different interviews. And at the end of the interviews, if we want, we can discuss next steps and potentially deliberate our selection. That's sort of our game plan in ten thousand feet. But to the questions, do people have comments? Question, Joe, you still want to do some, I'm not trying to rush anyone either. Okay, yeah. So let's let Mr. Pato read this, just hand you if that's okay. And then we can get on to specific comments. Ms. Hay, did you want to run through the process that we used up to this day with the search screening?
Sure. So just as a reminder to everyone, back in June, we selected Municipal Resources Inc. as our outside consultant. And they drafted a job description profile, which was published and ran in numerous different recruiting outlets. They also did some individual outreach. We received about two dozen applications by the deadline, which was July eighth. MRI vetted through for the, the people who met all of our minimum requirements. The committee then reviewed those applicants. We sent, we selected eleven that we would interview, that we would further research. And we sent each of those eleven a series of essays. And I believe those, those topics were, I hope, in the packets and you've all seen those. From those, we selected six people who we brought in for interviews last week. And you had those interview questions as well in your packet. And then the people, oh, I have one other thing. The people who were coming in for the interviews were asked to submit to us a piece of written work that they had done, that they had presented, which sort of showed their analysis and presentation on a project that had competing interests and how they made a recommendation. Then in advance of the interview, we had sent out to each of the candidates the excerpts from our summit in June regarding financing of the debt exclusion for LHS. So all of that information has also been shared and the candidates have had that as well. So that's sort of where we've been up to today.
Ms. Barry.
Ms. Hay, just to clarify a question. You said we had the questions from last week. Was that the questions that were going to be asked or the responses to the questions that were asked?
No, those are the questions that were asked since everybody took their own notes and we didn't run a tape. I don't have a consolidated. But I think when we get to, if you wish, when we get to sort of deliberation later in the day, I think Mr. Sandin and I can certainly add in from, you know, the, the outtakes from the committee's discussion, if you wish.
No, I just wanted to clarify for the public that we don't know.
Right.
The responses.
We don't have, right. We just had the, the list of questions.
We didn't get any type of report. We just got three candidates.
Correct. The committee does not rank. They just sent their, the, the top three candidates from the interviews.
Mr. Sandin, I know had a question. Um, or comment.
Wait, wait till we get to the question.
I think we're, I think we're at that part. I think we're done with the process. So now we're going to get into the meat of, does anyone have any questions or comments about the questions we're going to ask today?
So I, I understand that we have limited amount of time in order to talk with the candidates. Some of that we're trying to not repeat questions that have been asked previously. However, some of the questions that we're asking today have been asked previously and for example, from one, one of the things I'm, I'm focused on, you might be surprised to hear is sustainability. And, and we asked a written question of the candidates on sustainability and we have written responses. But as probably all of us are, are familiar with interviewing somebody, seeing the responses in person is very different than seeing the responses in, in actuality. I would love to be able to have some question that addresses sustainability. The other thing that I'm focused on that we haven't really talked about in any of the written questions or any of the proposal questions for today. We've all gone through a once in a generation health crisis with COVID and be interested in understanding what lessons learned town managers that candidates have had going through that in their past. Because I think we've all learned a lot here in Lexington as a result of that. It'd be interesting to see what lessons learned they might have.
Thank you, Sandin. Mr. Pato.
And I just want to confirm for myself and for the public, as this is an interview process, the questions have been developed by the Chair and Vice Chair. And we don't stray from these. We ask all candidates the same set of questions. And while there might be a follow up based on a response, we don't have the latitude to just go explore other areas.
Yeah, right. In fairness to the candidates, we don't want to ask different sets of questions to different candidates. Yep, Ms. Barry.
So if, I don't know if we're going to entertain Mr. Sandin's request to potentially put on two other questions, but if we're going to go down that path, I'd like to see us add a question specifically related to planning, organizing, being involved in large scale public events that have a huge security component to it and a very challenging funding structure, namely the two fifty, but we can maybe do better than that if we need to.
So we have proposals on the floor to have three questions integrated. So we have a couple of options. We can either add three questions. We can either take three questions away and add these three topics. I, I know Ms. Hay and I spent a fair amount of time with these questions again, based on what was discussed in advance. That does not mean we can't change it. Just want to warn us that if we do change some questions, that we need to work very rapidly at this point. And I'm, again, I'm amenable. I do believe that some of the responses may not be a full five minutes. But we do want to give the candidates, you know, time to reflect and answer on the questions we've asked. So I'd like to hear from other members if they feel that that's appropriate to add questions or change questions. I think we've heard from two members that they'd like to add, or actually, I'm not sure if you would taking that as an add or a to place.
It can be either. My point is if we're going to open it up, there's one I'd like to add, have, you know, incorporated as well. If they're not going to open it up, it's moot point.
And, and another alternative is just to try to figure out how to insert the topic into one of these existing questions, which I think there may be room for a head one or two at least. I'm just looking to see which one might be available.
Well, I think Mr. Sandin's question about dealing with a, a crisis like COVID can fit into the critical decisions with incomplete information. Because that clearly was what was going on at the time.
If we go in order, Mr. Pato, that would be your, that would be your question. Would you like to incorporate some language in there about COVID? Would that be, would you be amenable to doing that?
Yeah, I think I can, if, if just quickly, it, it starts with Matt, I'm not going to beat out the question.
Actually, before you, before you redo that, can I just make a suggestion that I think that question in particular responded directly to something we spent a fair amount of time talking about as a requested scenario in our retreat. I would maybe rather see it worked into question three. If you look at question three, I think I think that really falls within that.
It works there too. Then that's.
I'm sorry, I.
I also thought question three could be morphed into board goals and board goals being the strong sustainability goals. So I would put sustainability with three.
So, so five minutes, yeah. Right. Why don't we do this? Why, why don't we add to three? I'll, I'll add the sustainability and COVID. I'll, I'll work on that. I think that, I think that is the appropriate place for it. And then as far as Ms. Barry's question about, you know, large scale events. Ms. Barry, would you like, what do you think about putting that in the economic development strategy question?
We can add an eleven question. I mean, what is now eleven could be a wrap up. Question could be twelve. We could just add a question if we had to. I mean, twelve questions, we've, we've given ourselves a little bit of leeway and timing. Because I do think, well, I, I guess I think we spent a lot of time with Ms. Wortman trying to figure out what were the things that we all agree we really needed to hit. And I think each of these questions addresses that. And I think this is a piece, you know, this balancing question actually. So I think that I, I recommend maybe that what Ms. Barry is suggesting is a standalone issue separate from what this is. I mean, I think, I think they're, they're both value, but I do think they're different unless, but that's just my opinion and I'm happy to hear other views.
I, I don't feel compelled to add this question. I mean, I think a lot, while it is a specific scenario, we already have a scenario question and I'm not looking for a detailed answer in an interview on that topic.
Does anyone else want to make a comment on this?
So being incredibly close to the issue and we have a lot of significant issues that whoever is chosen to fill this role is going to have to deal with right off the bat. So I don't know if I'd say there's going to be a learning curve. There's going to be a learning hypo warp speed. I think it's important that we are facing tremendous funding challenges right now for the two fifty. We are facing tremendous logistical challenges for the two fifty and, and working with not just our partners in the other communities and along the corridor. We still have to communicate this to, in an effective manner, to our citizens, to our working population. We are going to be on not just a local, state or national stage. We are going to be on an international stage. And I believe in September, Mr. Lucenti, I don't know if the date has been set. I believe the board is supposed to be getting an update from Public Safety on what's going on. But for me personally, and I would hope for the board, since the two fifty is, you know, very representative of this community in which we serve, that this would be an important thing. It might feel like a bit of minutia, but we are very far behind in our planning. We do not have the resources we need to make this a successful event. And I just want to put that out there for all of you. I'm just curious to hear what, it is a scenario question, but I'd like to hear how different people would approach this issue to get up to speed and to help us move this forward to be successful. But I'm one of five.
Mr. Pato.
Right. And it, I, I, I recognize that. And I, I believe whoever we hire, that's going to be a significant issue that they're going to have to deal with. But it's not going to be a solitary issue. For example, we have what currently looks like a six hundred to seven hundred million dollar project for the high school, which is going through critical milestones over the next several months as well. Having to deal with legislative action, having to deal with considering potentially out of the box opportunities for pursuing that. I would love to ask questions, but I don't think it's appropriate in an interview.
And maybe it's a combined question.
Ms. Barry, I do see some value in adding that to the tenth question. I don't know if you want to look at that one specifically, but I think it fits in. We can, we can sort of add that as another element or take off the last sentence and add that question in.
The other place we could potentially morph it in is number nine. And strategic financial leadership is the topic. Which covers both of those issues.
With the high school.
High school nine?
We. I will say that every one of the candidates has addressed the high school in their writing and their interview answers. Everybody's aware of that. Everybody knows that that's sort of top of mind.
Haven't really addressed the two fifty question at all. So I, I do think it's appropriate. I'm just trying to fit in what. I'm going to just make an executive decision given the time that we're going to add it into the tenth question. And I'm going to give some leeway for Ms. Barry and Mr. Sandin to put the right language in there because Mr. Sandin is going to be asking that question.
They could also just switch.
Or you could switch. That's fine. Is that fair enough? Just so we can move on. And I'm going to add into, just to be clear, question number three. Topics of sustainability and COVID response. Everyone good with that?
Okay, so I'm going to do nine.
And for process, Ms. Lucenti, you're going to open with the sort of introductory paragraph and then I'm going to go to question one and then we're going to go and then you'll end.
That is correct. Yeah.
And I threw at the end of this some sort of prompt things for people. If you did have follow up inquiries so that we sort of do that uniformly as well. It's at the very bottom.
So, sorry. In terms of follow up questions, I'm hoping we might be able to, if one of the candidates mentions a specific topic, I think that's covered under the can you be more specific thing. Might be able to ask a follow up. You said blah. I'd like to learn a little bit more about that or something.
Yeah, I think we just all have to be mindful of where, what we're doing on the time so that we're equitable to each candidate.
Right. We're going to take a brief recess while we get the candidate in the room and get settled. So unless there's any other burning things before we get started.
The only thing I was going to say is that for the committee, I asked that we not be interviewing over our laptops. If there's a way, if you need to use it for the interview, I get it. But we did provide written copies of the questions because it just feels a little more, I don't know, impersonal or a little more of a barrier. So I am not going to use my laptop and I don't know if other people are able to do the same.
We'll see how the font size works out. But for right now, I think I can see, given ten minutes or no, I'm not sure. Can't promise that.
We can reprint in a larger font.
Yes, we may need to. All right. We're going to recess for four minutes. Yeah. So I may have to repeat that, but I apologize. I just want to reiterate, warm welcome to Margot Fleischman, our first candidate for the town manager position. Again, recognizing that public setting is unique and challenging and our goal is to get to know you better, understand your vision and hear how you approach opportunities in Lexington. And you'll be given one hour for this interview. We have a series of questions that cover aspects of town government, town management. Please feel free to take your time. I'll save that part again. That, that's important. And if you at any point need us to repeat a question, we are happy to do so. This is of course a unique format for interviews. But our intention is to create an environment where you're comfortable sharing your ideas and thoughts and experiences and have an open dialogue with the board. So each member of the board will take turns asking the questions and after each question, you'll have time to respond. And we may ask some follow up or clarifications. And once we're done with that, we'll give you an opportunity to ask us any questions or provide any other thoughts or feedback. And with that, I will ask our board members to introduce themselves.
Jill Hay. Nice to see you again.
Well, I'm Joe Pato. Nice to see you.
And I didn't say publicly, but Lucenti, Chair.
Good morning. I'm Susie Perry.
And Mark Sandin.
So to start off, yeah, if you were selected for this role, could you please give us a brief one to two paragraph description that we would use in a press release to announce to the community why you were the right decision for this role?
Well, good morning, everybody. Is my microphone on? I haven't quite.
No, if you want to pull up this, this is the first test. If you want to push up on the button toward you. And if you tap on it, it might.
Better? Okay, wonderful. Well, good morning, everybody. It is truly an honor and a pleasure to be here and thank you for this opportunity. And before I give you my, my bio, I guess I'll just say, I want to just appreciate you for your role in this process. I have hired two town managers I have sat in those chairs and I know what an awesome responsibility it is. So thank you for your service to your community. So in introducing myself to the community, what I think I would want you to include in that press release is that personally and professionally, I am someone who's dedicated my career to working in local government because I believe that it has an important role to making people's lives better on a daily basis. Personally, professionally, my background is in municipal and nonprofit management. Currently, I'm the Senior Manager for Capital Program Planning at the MBTA. But until January of this year, I was Director of Strategic Initiatives and Communications for the City of Melrose, where I, I worked in a position that was similar in a certain sense in structure and responsibility to a town manager. I reported directly to the mayor and my job was to execute the policies and priorities that he set and to manage the city staff to achieve those policy goals. I've also had the honor and the privilege to serve my home community in Bedford, Massachusetts, right next door for seventeen years, twelve years on the Select Board, including three years as Chair. And one, excuse me, five years on the Planning Board, including one term as Chair of the Planning Board. So both in my professional and elected roles, I've had the opportunities to advance policy areas that I'm truly passionate about, including affordable housing, economic development, transportation, the relationship between public health and the built environment, energy and sustainability and climate change response and equity and inclusion. In all of this work, what I valued most are the relationships I've developed with my colleagues, with elected officials at all levels of government and most importantly, with the members of the public that I have served. So I, I have demonstrated through my career that I share the values that I see in Lexington, which is what I see is innovation, inclusion, sustainability and stewardship. And these are the values that I've put into practice throughout my career. Your comprehensive plan articulates the idea that local government plays a critical role in creating, quote, livable communities that are healthy, welcoming and economically vibrant. And it would be an absolute honor for me to help you achieve those goals. I, I do believe that local government is at the forefront of growth, resources and equity. The challenges that communities face these days, how to provide the best education for young people, the best quality of life for people of all ages, how to remain affordable for people of all stages of life and income ranges and how to affect, how to impact the, how to address the impacts of climate change. These are the issues that energize me and make me excited to come to work every day. And these are the, the issues that Lexington is prioritizing. I believe I have the temperament, experience and versatility needing for this role. And I'd be delighted to bring my skills to the town of Lexington.
Thank you very much. And I'll start with the questions with Ms. Hay.
Thank you. So building trust and strong working relationships among senior management team is crucial for a cohesive leadership. Can you describe a time when you had to address a lack of trust or poor collaboration, either with or within your senior management team? And how did you approach rebuilding that trust and what strategies did you use to ensure lasting positive working relationships?
Well, I will say that when I joined the mayor staff in Melrose, it was right at the moment when the town was reopening or the city, excuse me, was reopening after the sort of worst days of COVID had subsided. I started in June of twenty twenty one and at that time, City Hall had been shuttered. People had been working remotely or semi in person. People had been working remotely or semi in person. And there had been a lot of turnover. And there was a significant lack of cohesion amongst the staff and a, and a, and a sort of vacuum in the sense that there hadn't been somebody in my position for a number of months. And I had to come in and first of all, prove myself to, to the colleagues that I was going to lead. But then also help them to try to rebuild the fabric of the senior leadership. So for example, there hadn't been senior staff meetings for many months. And obviously, the very first thing that I did was to reinstitute, reinstitute senior staff leading, staff meetings. So that I and the new department heads and the, and the, and the long serving department heads could just get to know each other as people. To understand what was going on in each area of government. And to develop that trust which had been attenuated by the lack of contact for, you know, such a long period of time. So some of it was those sorts of structural issues, just the idea of being in the same room, learning about each other. But then it was also addressing conflicts when they occurred that were sometimes, that were sometimes born of this lack of familiarity. So in fact, my first week on the job, I got a phone call from one of my department heads who was in tears. Which I, I sort of suspected was not typical for her. And as I got to know her better, it turned out to be true that it was not a commonplace thing for her to become so overcome by a situation. But she was in conflict with another department. And she needed my assistance as the chief of staff and the person who was there to help manage through these issues. To help her not only just accomplish a certain task that was important to her and it was time sensitive. But also to acknowledge that she was in conflict, that there was a, another department head who she felt was perhaps not as respectful of her needs as she might have been. And then to bring them together. I mean, I immediately called a, a meeting where there was an opportunity for us to, I mean, it was at that point still virtual, but to kind of go around the room, so to speak. And to hear the issues and the concerns from, from both parties. And to try to find common ground and to assist those department heads in finding, understanding the needs and excuse me, the perspectives of others. So in some cases, in that role as the, the chief of staff and the manager who was trying to help these department heads be effective, my job was to listen to them and to be a sounding board and then help them strategize ways that they could move forward. You know, I think setting expectations amongst the staff that we're all professionals, that we all need to work together and to get things done. And to hold people accountable when necessary, if their behavior doesn't live up to the standards that are, are important for, for us as a community of people working together. People have to be able to work together and, and part of that is demonstrating respect for them and helping them to grow in their respect for each other. And when those, when those bumps occur in the road, really taking that, that time to listen and to be empathetic. But also to be a critical thinker in terms of strategizing those solutions because the public cannot wait for something to get done because staff members within the organization are not getting along. So I, I generally try to see those challenges coming and head them off. But sometimes it's unavoidable and you deal with it. But overall, I would say that developing a culture within your workforce of being mutually respectful, supportive, on the same page, that was the other thing that I heard, it rang in my ears over and over again. As I introduced myself to the staff in Melrose, I had one on one meetings with all the department heads and all the managers. That there was a lack of in it togetherness. There was a lack of esprit de corps and morale was not where it should be. In large part because of the pandemic and because changes in personnel. And I think even now that we are in a, in a, you know, somewhat more post pandemic world. Those, those challenges will continue to occur as people change, that roles change, people retire, there's turnover. A new manager comes in, it's to be expected, there'll be tensions. But I feel like leading with openness, civility, respect and compassion are the ways to help be successful in building that trust within an organization.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. Recognizing blind spots and accepting feedback are keys to effective leadership. How do you actively seek out and accept feedback? Can you provide an example where you were given difficult feedback and how you adapted because of it?
So I will say that acknowledging your blind spots is a, a, a practice, right? Something where you have to iteratively check in with yourself and to, and to be aware of where you may be missing something. You know, I, I certainly feel as though over the past number of years, it has become fairly challenging to be in, in leadership in municipal government. And there have certainly been instances where as an elected official or as a member of an administration, there may have been a sense that you were not, as a representative of local government, you were not hearing all perspectives or seeing the, the true lay of the land. I mean, I think you do get into a position if you're a proponent of or you're advocating for or you're working on certain projects that you can start to narrow your focus. And we all are aware that we can personally and professionally live in, in echo chambers. And sometimes it's, it's born of a genuine desire to move things forward and to create momentum for our project. But you know, I do, I do feel as though in instances where I have been challenged to look at whether or not I have been broad enough in terms of public outreach or acknowledgement of a difference of perspective about a policy or initiative which has occurred. I have tried to sort of regroup and really scrutinize my own approach to my work and to say, did I miss opportunities where I could have been more receptive or appeared more receptive or have put myself in the way of people who disagreed with me more? And I think certainly that is always something to be aware of and to work on. Because our society in general has become a bit more, people retreating into their own corners a little bit. Being more intentional about going out and seeking the perspectives of others. So for an example, in Melrose, I was the, the one of the people who moved ahead with a community conversations initiative. There had been divisive issues in the community. And I had proposed to the mayor that it might be something we could address from our community wellness lens that we had started in 2022, in the, in the winter of 2022. Branding it as the year of community health and wellness. And it was my job to sort of align policies and projects to support the initiatives of this year of health, community health and wellness. Well, along the way, there were divisive convers, you know, divisive issues and things that seemed to be breaking the fabric of the community a little bit. And so we, we did move forward with this community conversations initiative. And the way that it worked was that we hired a consultant who came, was going to come in and train local volunteers to lead conversations, to build the capacity of the community to deal with divisive issues by sort of training them on a structured dialogue process that these consultants would, would provide. And my job was to go out into the community and to recruit volunteers from a range of different backgrounds. Political beliefs, tenure in town, lived experience. Whatever it was, the idea was, it wasn't just supposed to be the usual suspects. And it was very humbling to go out into the community and to be perceived as a representative of the administration. And therefore carrying a certain portfolio of beliefs and ideologies. Where in my mind, I was going forward to try to help the community identify folks of, you know, a variety of different backgrounds. And hearing the feedback from people who said, we don't trust you. We don't understand why you would want to do this. We don't know why we should be talking to other people about things that we disagree with. It was incredibly humbling. And it, and it, and it made us re, reevaluate our approach. Restructure our, our steering group and organization to try to diffuse, but also acknowledge that there, there, there were reasons why people felt that way. And we wanted them to participate in the initiative despite the fact that perhaps they might think that we were not in the administration representative of their views. That was in fact, the entire point of the project. But it was, it did require me to step back and say, I think of myself as doing my job. I think of myself as being a neutral, fair person. And am I really living up to that in all the ways that I possibly can? And it was, it was very instructive and helped me frame my approach to other initiatives in, in a more thoughtful way.
Thank you. So in municipal government, achieving strategic goals requires more than just a plan. It demands responsiveness, adaptability and effective delegation, especially when faced with unforeseen challenges. With sustainability becoming increasingly crucial and the lessons learned from the COVID nineteen pandemic. How have you successfully leveraged your team to navigate these complexities? Can you share specific examples where you have overcome unexpected obstacles such as those related to sustainability initiatives, initiatives? Or responding to the COVID nineteen crisis to achieve a strategic goal?
So just so I understand the question correctly, you touched on effective delegation. Achieving strategic goals through leveraging your team, is my understanding, yeah?
And with the lens.
With the lens of sustainability.
Yeah, and, and you know, what maybe lessons learned from COVID.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I do feel as though effective delegation, first of all, just to touch on that, i- i- is incredibly important. And I think it's something that I, I have, I have experienced with and it's a strong point. You know, when I was building, building my team within the mayor's office, it, it, we were a little bit understaffed and it was really my job to sort of advocate for making sure that if there were expectations that we were going to be able to meet, that we had the people in place to do them. And so for example, we did use some of our ARPA funding to hire an economic development director because there had been an economic impact to the town. And it was something that we just didn't have the capacity to address. Similarly, we used ARPA funds to hire the city's first, excuse me, city's first social services coordinator. There were no, so, there were no social workers in the city and there was no social work coordinator. So if somebody came with a need or a concern, they would come to the mayor's office and we wouldn't know what to do. And it was, it was very disheartening because you would have all of the impulse in the world to help somebody who was in a very serious crisis. They were going to lose their home or any number of things, you know, they were, they were a renter and their, their landlord was doing something that they, they shouldn't be and they wanted assistance. So again, we, we recognized the, the pinch points where we could not meet the expectations of the community and we leveraged some of the resources that we had to help accomplish those things. And then it saw those, those initiatives really flourish. We had, from the economic development point of view, then we had somebody on the ground who could go and address the needs of the small business owners in the community. And from the social services perspective, somebody who was there, we could call, right? Someone walks into our office in crisis because the mayor's office is where you go when you're in crisis because someone's gonna help you. And sure enough, we could point them, look, we have somebody here on staff who can assist you. And in those first days after COVID, there were a, a lot of needs that had been unmet for a long time. And it did take some organization and strategic thought about, well, these are our resources, these are the needs. We need to connect these in, in meaningful ways. And that was part of my job. And I really, that was some of the most meaningful work that I, I, I did while I was there. We, in terms of sustainability. You know, I would, I would turn, in, in, in Melrose, we had a sustainability manager and someone who was extremely effective. I mean, she's very well known within the sustainability world and Martha Grover, if you've met her, you know that she's a powerhouse. And so that was an easy one, you know, that though she was just finishing the, the city's net zero plan and was developing all of the strategic partners that would need to be engaged in order to move forward on it. But we already were lucky enough to have that person in place. In, in Bedford, it wasn't quite the same way, you know, being on the select board and having sustainability as a core part of our overarching goals. We struggled to be able to put into practice the things that we wanted to do based on our net zero plan because we didn't have the ability to delegate to, to somebody. Although that was not my personal responsibility, but as the select board. We did need to find a way to make room in our budget to, to hire somebody to do that and to find someone who was qualified. So in terms of sort of the strategic goal settings, part of it is just being very clear, you know, if you have those plans. Somebody has to execute them. If you need somebody to execute them, you have to have the resources to be able to go out and hire that person. That person has to fit within a, a reporting structure where they can be effective and they are supported. And all of those things are the building blocks to being successful. When you, when you want to face those complex subjects. You know, I think the lessons learned about sustainability is it's an all hands on deck sort of thing. You need communication specialists, you need outreach specialists, you need to be focused on the, the small and the large ways, the policy levels, the zoning. But also the outreach to the communities in the, in your, in your town that are not being well served. Who may have needs about transitioning off of fossil fuels. Who may not be English speakers, who may be elderly and have impediments to their being able to participate in this robust plan that you paid some consultant to, to draw up for you. So you do need to have a big picture of how you're going to chip away at those significant impediments over time if you're going to be successful in achieving those goals that are in your plans. And you know, I know that Lexington has a, a very robust road, roadmap towards, towards net zero and your sustainability plan for 2023. And, and some of that has to do with resources, but it also has to do with an orientation towards the community, community engagement. If you're talking about the business community or, or residents or your, your large anchor institutions. And I, and I have had experience doing that and it, it takes a lot of time and intentionality. So, you know, you're absolutely right. All the plans in the world don't get things done. You need to execute on them and you need a good team to be able to do it.
Thank you very much.
So Lexington is committed to fostering an inclusive community. Our recent internal equity audit highlighted the need for greater diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, DEIB. Knowledge, skills and cohesive leadership engagement. As town manager, how would you lead the effort to address these needs? How would you define and measure success? And additionally, how would you expand these initiatives to our outward facing community work?
That's a wonderful question. So I, 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 I think that in terms of defining success, one of the most important things about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging efforts are acknowledging that you need to start by understanding where you are as a community or an organization and where you need to go to become an inclusive space where people of all backgrounds and abilities can feel welcome and supported to participate as their authentic self. And this is a fundamental all, all inclusive, values based approach to workforce development, community outreach, customer service. There are so many points of entry from the point of view of town hall about how you how you promote and how you measure your, your activities to become a place where people do feel that sense of belonging. I certainly do think Lexington ha- having passed your systemic racism resolution and full inclusion. passed your systemic racism resolution and full inclusion resolution is is signaling to the world and signaling signaling to the to yourselves that this is a value. How you implement it on the internal level begins with those equity audits. I I was in a similar position where in Melrose, we did contract for an internal equity audit and then a training series. And we we were able to begin a conversation with our existing workforce. And then also, as we built out our plans for in greater inclusivity for boards and committees to find ways to measure our success by using new new software that we brought on board that allows people to self identify so that we could start tracking. We had no idea how diverse our our boards and committees were. We suspected quite rightly that they weren't as diverse as the community. So with those trainings comes an awareness that you are living within a context where there's a certain level of diversity within your community, and you want to see yourself making progress towards having your staff and your boards and committees reflect the diversity that you have. And Lexington is very blessed to have a very diverse community and and people who are on the speaking on the the outreach side, working hard as community volunteers, like the iGig Initiative, where there are people there who are encouraging other people to get involved. Folks who haven't shown up, have not been running for office or maybe asking to be appointed for boards and committees. And I think that those those sorts of initiatives require a good level of collaboration. You can do things like a town government 101. You have a lot of newcomers, just people who have moved to Lexington within the past 20 years. I remember when I was a newcomer to a small town in Massachusetts, I didn't know anything about town meeting form of government. I didn't know what the thresholds were to be able to volunteer for a board and committee. And some of that is iterative education, recognizing new people are coming into your community all of the time. And you want to be positioned and promoting the idea that everybody is welcome, and you want to build that sense of belonging. I think also it's important not to neglect the idea of the built environment in your in your in your community and also in your buildings. If you don't have accessible buildings, you are not a welcoming place for people with disabilities. So in Melrose, I worked on the ADA Self Assessment and Transition Plan. The city hadn't had one in 30 years. And we recognized and acknowledged the ways in which we were dramatically falling short of being an accessible workplace and an accessible fully accessible community in terms of our parks and our playgrounds and our municipal buildings and our website, right? It's not just necessarily the physical things, it's the access to information. So a focus on making sure that people in the community, regardless of their background, regardless of what language they speak, have an equitable access to opportunities, information, and the opportunity to participate in local government is an orientation that I think you just have to bake into everything that you do. And I, you know, I feel as though this is something that Lexington is striving for, and I have worked on in other communities, and I think it's critical to building that trust, getting back to Ms. Hayes' original question. You can't build trust with people if they can't meet you on a level playing field in terms of your boards, your committees, your community events. If people are being excluded because of the feeling of not belonging because of economic situations or because of their country of origin, these are things you have to work on every day.
Okay. So Lexington's adopted MBTA community zoning. Thank you. And we've exceeded the minimum requirements. Several projects are already in the pipeline for approval comprising several hundred units and maybe more. As town manager, how would you ensure that the town's infrastructure can support the new development while maintaining quality of life for residents? And what steps would you take to proactively address potential issues? And how would you keep the community engaged and informed throughout this process?
Well, first of all, I mean, I just have to congratulate Lexington on having been on the forefront of this issue. And I think you recognize in your own select board goals that affordable and accessible housing for people is a huge issue in your community. And, you know, having zoned, you know, those three overlay districts and 227 acres, you you have set the table for the potential for a lot of growth. And I know that having having gone to town meeting to support this same issue in in Bedford, there is naturally a lot of concern about the consequences. What are the consequences? And with as with any zoning initiative, you cannot quantify in advance what the consequences might be. It is a development by development issue that will come before your zoning board of appeals or your planning board. And as the town manager, I think the most important part of that is to stay abreast of what is being proposed, where is it being proposed? What are the existing resources and infrastructure that exist there? I mean, there are some communities where there is insufficient water or sewer. And and those sorts of impacts can potentially be mitigated through some some bylaws and some mitigation. And, you know, we created in Bedford a a revolving fund for for that to be able to start to build up our internal ability to meet the financial consequences of new developments, be they a large commercial industrial out on Middlesex Turnpike or, you know, a multifamily housing that it might tax the water and sewer system in some area where there isn't sufficient infrastructure existing. You know, obviously, in the community, there's always going to be concern about traffic, and there's always going to be concerns concerns about school enrollment, requiring traffic studies and requiring requiring school enrollment studies of a proponent, developer who is coming before the town is an absolutely critical and fundamental step that if you're if we're not taking those steps, you know, you're really just not doing your job. Planning ahead and looking at how those fit in if you want to have independent third-party folks come in and assess your your enrollment projections. I mean, we did this in Melrose where there was some sense before the pandemic of where the schools were going to be. And then the pandemic really rearranged everybody's thinking about that, that you have to go back in light of new information, in light of the zoning, and and get some good, critical, third-party, independent information to help you guide you. So as you are rebuilding your high school, as you are rebuilding your schools, that you are positioning yourself to be able to have the physical capacity to to educate all of the children who might be coming coming to to your town, not just now, but in 10, 20, and 30 years. And it is, you're never going to get it entirely right. Nobody predicted the pandemic. Nobody knew that school enrollment for a couple of years was really going to crater or that demographic trends were going to change. People might have be having fewer children or delaying their children. And those sorts of contractions and pinch points, they are a natural, frequently occurring instance as we go through generation by generation and family sizes change. But in this particular instance, you have made a dramatic change in what is allowable in your community. And it'll be a question of managing through those consequences as they arise, as those projects are being proposed. And and then evaluating as you go along, are there any adjustments that you need to make in your zoning? But overall, I mean, I think that is a a healthy and a a welcome change that communities are now looking at ways to be able to address the housing crisis in this region through the the increase in in available units for people to come and live in in wonderful communities like like Lexington.
So the relationship between the town manager and the select board is crucial for effective governance. How do you envision a truly collaborative partnership where both vision and execution are aligned? And can you share any specific strategies you would use to foster the trust, ensure clear communication, and navigate any potential disagreements to keep the town moving forward?
Well, you know, I I do think that what's truly unique about my candidacy is that I understand the relationship between the select board and the town manager from the inside out. Having served as the the chair of the select board three times, I was the town manager's first call, you know, that I was that first among equals who was responsible for strategizing or responding or guiding or receiving feedback from the town manager to make that relationship work between the select board and and their manager. Obviously, it's a complex relationship. And as I mentioned in the in the prior interview, I always think of it as a bit of a dance, but it's not always the same person leading. The select board is the town manager's boss. They're responsible for setting the policy and for providing the management oversight of the town manager. And the manager must be responsive and 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 responsible to the to the select board. On the other hand, the select board is dependent on the manager for information, for professional management skills, for all of those roles that are delegated, the daily running of the community. And there has to be an incredibly high level of trust and constant communication. Now, obviously, communication outside of a public meeting, you want to make sure that you're not violating open meeting laws amongst yourselves. But the benefit is that the town manager can speak to each one of you. The town manager can pick up the phone and can call each one of you. But particularly the relationship with the chair. The chair is going to be critical in setting the, you know, the the course, charting the course of the of the year, setting the agendas, flagging things for the town manager. The town manager cannot possibly know everything that is going on in the community, even if he or she lives in the community. And that relationship is 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 important and special. But then, on a on a weekly basis, the town manager being responsive to you as a board is the most important. The strategies that I would employ at from the point of view of being the manager as opposed to being a select board member would be very similar to the way that I related to the city council in Melrose. Although I was in a different role, they're the legislative body, and I was the the mayor's designee to to communicate with them. I did feel similarly as the decision makers about so many important, critical, and, you know, financially significant decisions, that my job was to make sure that every city councillor was resourced with all the information that they needed to make a good decision. Of course, the mayor had a perspective and a point of view on what decision he would like them to make, and he would make that clearly known through his transmissions to the city council. But my job was also to make sure that those questions that the city councillors had were answered accurately from the correct department head. I be became a conduit for information and would also make sure that there was equitable access to that information. You really don't want to be in a situation where some of the decision decision makers have more information than others. So if one city councillor called a department head and asked a question, I would ensure that that answer was really back in a public public format through their next agenda to make sure that questions that were asked and answered could be memorialized and then could be could be looked back on, not only by the other city councillors, but members members of the public. So with every large decision that we made, I created a rolling frequently asked questions document that would be updated regularly with every city council meeting and providing those answers in a very timely fashion. I I do think that as the the select board town manager relationship, the the trust building is through being responsive. And if select board members have questions, finding answers in a timely manner is critical. Certainly, I've stood up at town meeting for, you know, countless times answering questions from members of the public where I had to go and find the information. And if I didn't couldn't find the information to admit that I didn't know, but that somebody would get back to them with the correct information. This is how you build trust with your board. This is also how you build trust with the community. You need to be transparent, and you need to be forthright, and you have to be honest. Now, I I do know that when you're sitting here in public and you're on television, frank conversations are not always the easiest. But communicating difficult information diplomatically is is a skill, and it's one that I I I excel at. And that would be, my goal would be to find ways to make sure that when there were difficult things that needed to be said, they were said in appropriate ways that were helpful to you a- as a board in your decision making so that you would not be operating without all the facts that you needed. Good information makes good decisions.
So you've anticipated my question? Imagine you're a select board, in a select board meeting, where a critical and time-sensitive decision needs to be made. The board feels it does not have all the necessary information it was expecting. Tension is rising among board members, the staff, and public in attendance. As town manager, how would you navigate this situation to maintain trust and ensure a productive discussion? What immediate steps would you take to ensure that the decision-making process remains focused, constructive, and aligned with the town's strategic goals?
I can't say that I've ever been in a position where there was something so time-sensitive that you couldn't take a pause and regroup. I mean, even within the context of a a a select board meeting, you can, if through the chair, you can request that perhaps that subject be returned to later on in the agenda. If there's specific information that the town manager doesn't, for some reason, have at her fingertips at that moment, but could go and get and provide, I think the first thing would be to acknowledge the fact that somehow along the way, the town manager had not provided all the information needed and to listen and to accept that feedback from the select board. Because my goal would be to never be in the position where tensions were rising on account of a lack of information. That being said, you know, it at the end, at the conclusion of a meeting, it's the select board's decision whether or not to take take a position on something or to take a vote or to take a make a decision. And again, if it if it truly is an emergency, you could always post in another emergency meeting. If it's not truly an emergency, you have 48 hours, and you can go ahead and you can regroup. I think just staying calm and being responsive and recognizing that there is something contentious going on, and the board members don't feel as though they have adequate information to make a decision, and finding ways to work through it together. It's awkward. I wouldn't want to do that in real time on local cable access television. But if it came up, that would be my approach. I would offer some suggestions respectfully through the chair, see if we could regroup and get to the point that the board was comfortable taking a position.
Thank you.
In municipal leadership, there's often tension between addressing individual resident concerns and upholding town-wide policies or long-term goals. As town manager, how do you balance being responsive to resident complaints when they conflict with established policies or broader town objectives? Can you share an example when you had to address a situation where residents' individual interests were adversely affected by town policy and how you handled the response?
This is a very tricky question because, you know, from the point of view of a select, a long-term select board member, I have I have taken those phone calls. I have had those coffee chats with people where they have expressed dissatisfaction with a position that the board had taken or something that the town had done. And my only job was to relay that to the appropriate staff person or town manager and to let them take care of it. And, you know, that being able, that ability to to hand that off, I I enjoyed I enjoyed being the conduit for that information and making sure that residents felt that through me, they were having access to the people who could answer their questions and to, you know, felt like they were listened to and acknowledged if they had a concern. When I became a manager, and then I had to be on the receiving end of that information and know that it was not something, not a decision that we were going to change, not a a project that had been completed or something that people were dissatisfied with. And and the example that comes to mind was, in Melrose, we were trying to improve bike path accessibility along South Main Street, which is an area that is relatively close to the Orange Line. So a potential opportunity for some mode shift for people to be able to get on their bikes and bike down to the to the T, which would be great. Melrose also has commuter rail stations. But, you know, if somebody wants to go on the Orange Line, Melrose also has commuter rail stations, but, you know, if somebody wants to go on the Orange Line and they and they're willing to ride a bike, there wasn't a lot of bicycle accommodation. And so there was a plan that was executed to just simply paint bike lanes on, I think it may have only been on one side of South Main Street. And some of the residents in the area, the folks who lived in those homes, were understandably upset that they had not wanted the bike lane and it happened anyway. And we were trying to fulfill our policy goals of reducing vehicular traffic, reducing greenhouse gas emissions from cars, creating more transit oriented opportunities for folks. There were some developments that had been built where there was no parking available because they were close enough to transit hubs that there was some zoning that allowed new developments to be built without dedicated parking spaces for folks. So all of these things really fed into the idea that this bike accommodation, this infrastructure that was created was very important and a high priority for the community. And yet, there were people who were worried about backing out of their driveway. There were people who were worried about the loss of parking in front of their homes. And I think, once again, going back to the values of compassion and empathy, their issues were not irrational, their concerns were not unfounded. They were being asked to change. They maybe, in some cases, had lived in those homes for forty years and they were being asked to change their life and some of their habits to accommodate a goal that they perhaps couldn't really benefit from if they weren't going to be the ones hopping on their bikes and biking down to the Orange Line. And there were just a lot of neighborhood meetings, there were a lot of one on one meetings, there were a lot of taking phone calls from people and acknowledging their concerns. And at a certain point, the change happened and people got used to it. And I think that, understanding the context that there will always be people for whom the change is seen in a negative light and acknowledging them and and not demonizing them for their lack of enthusiasm for something that they were opposed to. And then also, there were some minor changes that could be made even within that project to address some some concerns, some slight reorientation of some of the parking distribution we were responsive to. But ultimately, that project moved forward, the bike lanes were painted. And overall, I think that that was, you know, it was absolutely consistent with the values that the mayor's administration was was operating under and the policies and the directives that he had given to his department had. So we, of course, stuck stuck with it, but not without a lot of of going back and trying to trying to address concerns where we could and then just empathetically listening to folks and saying, you know, we understand, but this is going to happen.
Thanks for your stuff.
So economic development in Lexington involves a vibrant downtown, a tourism base and larger commercial entities. As town manager, how would you support an economic development strategy that encourages local small businesses and attractions while also pursuing opportunities to bring in larger companies that could boost the town's tax base and employment? And further, in April of twenty twenty five, Lexington will celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Lexington. We have been planning for over two years for what is shaping up not to be a local, regional or state event, but a national or international event. We've faced and continue to face significant challenges, especially with funding and logistics, time is getting short. Can you talk about a strategy to help move this significant one time event forward while balancing everything else and collaborating with local, regional, state and federal partners?
Okay, so that sounds like two questions. Okay, I will start with the first question. You know, there there is absolutely wonderful opportunities in economic development in completely different realms, right? You have the regional economic development that's going on throughout our our region, the Middle Sex Three Initiative, you know, places where people, communities are band banding together to kind of co-locate industries, create branding for our region, you know, the high tech biotech lab and and, you know, other other large scale development, which obviously Lexington has seen. I drive down Bedford Street awful lot, I've seen that building being built. And you have those really important opportunities to support your small local businesses, your small, your your local franchises, your local, maybe even you have some people who live in Lexington who own businesses, your main streets, your downtown, the the social fabric of your community in in terms of fostering third places and gathering places and public public spaces that can support your small businesses, which is, you know, in this day and age with e-retail, you know, always going to be a challenge. So having a robust economic development approach, having having economic development director, somebody who's specifically charged with doing that, is really critical. When I arrived in Melrose, economic development was, I think, item number fourteen on my job description. And I recognized the fact that there was no possible way that I was going to be be able to provide the kind of care and attention that the small business owners needed, not to mention the sort of outreach and support of of those bigger anchor institutions that really support your tax base. Lexington's incredibly fortunate to have twenty three percent of its tax levy paid for by your commercial industrial property owners. And you have to put attention into that to support the finances of the town. And that is why we hired in Melrose, that's why we hired an economic development director to focus on that, to meet the needs of the small business owners, to be good listeners and to understand what their concerns and their needs were, especially coming out of COVID. And so, for example, we did a a small business relief fund using some ARPA funds for small businesses that had had financial setbacks during COVID. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of relationship building that really needs to go into successfully supporting those small businesses along your main street, which I think is a a very important expectation in terms of quality of life for your residents, that they want and they deserve places to go to to recreate, to spend their dollars locally, to be able to meet meet people on the street. And communities that don't invest in their downtowns are missing an important opportunity to to support the vibrancy of their community as a whole. There's also a lot of legwork to attract those new businesses in in Bedford. You know, it was literally a question of having the town, the town manager and the economic development director meeting potential large organizations that wanted to move into the town by the side of the road and showing them different properties where they had the opportunity to go ahead and build something. And that was successful. It was a one million dollar building permit during COVID because of the efforts, the really focused efforts to to attract large businesses to town. So it's a, it's a both and thing. I also worked with Project Pop Up, I know Lexington has done that as well, to address vacancies in your in your main main streets and to pop up new businesses. It's a wonderful way to really focus on diversity in your in your business community. We focused on women owned and BIPOC owned businesses that needed their first opportunity to be in a brick and mortar situation. And it was really gratifying to see that process move forward to build new members of our business community. So in terms of a strategy for small, small businesses and ongoing things separate from the Lexington two hundred and fiftieth, I think having a really robust plan, but somewhat two tiered plan of continuing to find those opportunities to attract those businesses. If you have office space that is vacant, to be a little bit of the entree into into town hall in terms of permitting and those sorts of things that can become, you know, they could, they can really slow down projects. You know, if you don't have a lot of coordination between your permitting boards, you can have little pre meetings where you make sure that a new developer is aware of what the issues are, really understands the local bylaws and is going to have a successful outcome if they have to go to the zoning board of appeals, if they have to go to the planning board. That is something that the economic development director and town manager absolutely should be attuned to at all times. And then the relationship building with the small businesses is is absolutely critical. In terms of the 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 national and international focus on Lexington for the two hundred and twenty fifth, it truly is a unique situation for a community. I cannot think of any community in this country who will be in the spotlight this way. The the most important part for anything like this is going to be security and the safety of the people who come to visit our community. Lexington, Concord and the other Lincoln, I guess, is the other community. I know you've been coordinating all along your plans and your approach to this event, but I think Lexington is really a very prominent place. The shot heard round the world, you know, immortalized in in hundreds of years of of lore for the its importance to our national identity. And my number one goal, if I was going to be your town manager, would be to ensure that we had strong emergency response plans in place that we had coordinated throughout the lead up to the event on security issues, on emergency response, that we did tabletop exercises with our partners in law enforcement and and the first responders and everybody knew what their roles were. This is going to be a very big thing for the community. And so much of the work that goes into a successful event, even if it's just a, you shut down Main Street for a fun afternoon of, you know, businesses offering trick or treating, this happens in Melrose every year. It takes a lot of coordination, DPW, MBTA, police, fire, everybody has to be involved. And having an emergency management person who is coordinating that effort is is really a critical element of it. Beyond that, you know, of course, you want it to be a successful day. Of course, you want to have the things that you had hoped for when you set out to build, build the event. And reaching out to the organizers of Lexington two fifty and to see what what is the gap between where they are and where they need to go back out of that date? What are the, where are the benchmarks that you have to hit so that you know that when you get to that event, there won't be something important that was missed? You may have to make some tough decisions, you may have to triage things, the the needs and the nice to haves, as with any, any big initiative. But putting on a a wonderful, joyous event to celebrate something as critical as the beginnings of our country is an awesome responsibility. And I I really, I'm I'm been so impressed with the events and the and the inclusive nature of the 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 lead up to to the event. It just reflects very, very well on the community. And so I I would sit down immediately with all stakeholders and to to find out exactly where you are in your planning for that event and what resources do you need to be successful? And then work on on setting out a strategy for accomplishing those things. Thank you.
Okay, so Lexington is known as for its strong fiscal, financial management. But with rising costs and increasing demand for services, it's an increasingly difficult balance. As town manager, how would you approach long term financial planning to ensure fiscal sustainability while still making necessary investments in infrastructure, services and community initiatives? And can you give us an example of when you've had to make difficult financial decisions and involve balancing competing priorities?
Well, you know, of course, the elephant in the room for Lexington right now is the high school project, which is something just on a scale that, you know, most communities have never and will never see. Although I will say that with the rising costs of construction, this probably will become more commonplace. But a doubling of your exempt debt is a is a huge change in your your economic or your financial outlook for for the next thirty or so years. That being said, I've been incredibly favorably impressed by the amount of forethought that has been brought to bear as you approached this this need. You know, the fact that over the course of almost ten years, you've been setting aside funds to help soften the impact of the increases in taxes for your your residential property owners reflects that sort of strategic thinking that you would need to continue through this this challenging point where you find yourself having embarked on an ambitious building project where you have a new new police station and you have have you redone several of your elementary schools? But now the 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 high school project and the sort of ancillary aspects of it are going to require a lot of thought and coordination. Those strategic summits, the financial summits, I think, are crucial to to making sure that all the, all of the the relevant committees and decision makers are in the room together to acknowledge the the scale of the impacts that might be felt, acknowledge the potential impact to your ability to bond other projects, figure out ways to be able to get that infrastructure, continue to work on the other infrastructure needs that the community has while also having this, you know, substantial increase in your in your exempt debt. That being said, I think Lexington is very well positioned. You know, you you are a healthy community, you have been well managed financially. And my strategy in terms of looking forward would be to be regularly revisiting what the 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 financial indicators are saying about the community in terms of, you know, regular budgeting and annual things. You obviously always want to be looking in the short, shorter term, but you also have to have that big picture. So you want to be working closely with your financial advisors, your bond counsel and your CPA firm to understand what are the risks in your environment as you're taking on this increased debt, a granular knowledge of your debt, your fund balances and reliable revenue projections. And then obviously, understanding that things will change over time. You you can't just sit there and say, well, everything is fine now, it's going to be fine in the future. Things change. I mean, the pandemic, I think, certainly showed us that. And and communities like Lexington and Bedford came out relatively unscathed, but other communities did not. You know, and I think certainly my example, the example that I I would draw from would be from from Melrose, which is a community that, like Lexington, rides pretty close to your 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 levy limit. And so any little change in the operating budget is always skirting up against the need for an override. And in fact, Melrose just recently had an override that didn't pass. And so that happened after I left, so I wasn't part of the team that then had to respond to that. But I know the decisions that they had to make in light of that that override not passing. And they had to do with cutting back on things that were were not wants, they were needs. And in terms of while I was still there, there was a lot of trying to balance significant competing needs with extremely limited resources and saying no to a lot of really important things because we had to deal with the nondiscretionary costs first, right? Health insurance went up dramatically. We we had a new trash hauling contract and it increased by five hundred thousand dollars. These things had to be absorbed. In in a certain sense, planning for the future does involve looking for when will that next override be necessary if we're going to be able to continue to offer the community the services that they need? And looking ahead prudently and laying the groundwork for understanding when and why those sorts of decisions would need to be taken. You simply cannot absorb a level of inflation that we've seen over the past couple of years under a two and a half percent limit year over year over year before you have to start dramatically cutting back on things that are important to people. So I think it is a question of balancing expectations and the needs of the community and supporting your department heads through what can be very difficult conversations. Is it is hard to tell a department head that they cannot have something that they need, even though you you agree with them that they need it because there just aren't resources? So building up the capacity to see what's coming, what resources you need to have in place in order to meet that and to set realistic expectations about what will need to happen in order for you to be able to meet those moments when they come. I think those are critical. I think those are critical elements of communication about the financial realities that you find yourself with. And I, I did have a lot of experience with that in, in Melrose just because of that situation where the community had high expectations and there were limited resources.
So as we wrap up, is there anything you would like to share with us in addition? Or is there any questions that you have for our board?
And well, first of all, I would just, I would thank you for the, the very thoughtful questions. And I, I think I would just like to, to share, just to clarify because I know that it isn't always apparent sometimes from job titles what somebody is doing. But that in Melrose, my job did involve a significant amount of management. And I hope that that has shown through in the answers to my questions. But I did have six department heads who reported directly to me as well as the economic development director and the staff at the mayor's office. And I spent an awful lot of time with the human resources director dealing with staffing issues and making sure that we were, you know, aligned and doing the best we could with, you know, a tough, tough labor market. I think this, this came up in the prior interview as well. Recruiting and retaining good staff at the municipal level is a huge challenge. And I have been through the hirings and I have been through the, the process of replacing long-term people who have left and taken a lot of institutional knowledge with them. And I, I really appreciate what, what a critical role having somebody in leadership in a town is to help guide everybody through those, those difficult moments. So I just, I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to say that because it is something that I, I, it was part of my job that I absolutely loved. I, I loved all the great initiatives that I did for the mayor, the things he would tell me to do and I'd have to figure out how to do them. Those were fun, fun projects, but I absolutely loved the management portion of it. And I, and I got a lot of wonderful experience doing it while I was in Melrose. And, and I'm sorry, did you say, do you want to know if I had any questions?
If you have any questions, yes.
And so the question that I have for you is, you know, I've, I've seen, obviously, your, your committee, your board goals and the ideal candidate profile that the recruiters put forward. But I would be curious to hear from, from each one of you as sort of representatives of the community, how, when this whole process is over and, and you've chosen a new town manager, how you will gauge the success of, of your choice? And maybe sort of at the end of the first year of the new town manager's tenure, what you, what, how, how you will know if you've made the right choice? That would be my question.
Ms. Hay, do you want to start off? Great question.
An excellent question, actually, and it's, and it's a fair question. And I don't know, you know, I, I would rely on the US Supreme Court very often for this quote, but I think we'll know it when we see it. And I think it will be a matter of how the community, the staff, this board and the manager all are able to integrate their, their goals and feel like a team and to feel like everybody's pulling in the same direction.
First of all, I want to thank you for your, your answers. I, I think there are several things. First, I'm not sure that success will be measured in one year. It will certainly be on a trajectory and I will be thrilled if I can turn around and say, yep, this was, this was absolutely right. I, I'll start by saying one way I'll measure success is that I'll still be on this board because I thought, I ran for reelection because I thought the person we hired was the right one. And, and I think Ms. Hay was absolutely right in saying how we, how staff and the public respond to the initiatives, the engagement, the style, and that we aren't feeling like we're drowning. Because as we've observed and you have observed in your answers, there are some very significant issues that the town is facing that will absorb an immense effort.
I want to also echo the thanks to the responses today. To me, the success is really about for the first year immersion into the community. And what that looks like to me is somewhat that you're in a known quantity and that people are aware of what we're working on. A lot, a lot of what we focus on, on this board is community engagement, communication. You know, during the last six years, we hired, seven years now, we hired a communications director. You know, it's important that the public know. And I think the uniqueness of a town manager role is that, you know, while you're not elected, you are the mouthpiece for the town often. And, you know, we want to make sure that that immersion has happened. And at that point, we will have had a two fiftieth event, hopefully. No rain. And, you know, so the success of that will probably be playing in my mind as well. And that, you know, we've kept things on track for our major projects and goals. You know, with change and transition, it's difficult to keep everything going forward. And as chair, I'm also very particularly concerned about making sure the ship keeps moving forward, that we don't get off course.
So it's all of that, okay? And it's also, there are sides of this job that are also very technical. There are sides of this job that are very style driven. But throughout all that, I think there also needs to be a balance. There needs to be a willing to create relationships with the appropriate people where they feel safe to be vulnerable, which is your staff, where they feel safe under the manager's leadership to fail and that the manager is going to help pick them up and learn from it and move forward and mentor them. I think it's a case where we feel that we have grown together as a community. So as the larger community, as the more internal staff across the board, not, we talk, we'll probably talk a lot today about senior staff and middle managers, but the, across the entire organization, the municipal and the school side, that we have grown as a board and come together, that our, our respect has grown, that we are all growing in the same direction. And it's not something that, it's something that is harder to kind of figure out if that's happened. But to the point I think Ms. Hay and Mr. Pato raises, we'll know it when we see it and it is a trajectory. So it's a work in process. So I think that's kind of what it is. It can somewhat feel like a, a gut feeling. Yeah, but it's a lot of all that.
So I agree with my colleagues. The, the word I have at the top of my list is collaboration. And so when I think about collaboration, I think about collaborating together to accomplish strategic goals that we've set out for ourselves. And it's an intense collaboration and strategic way of working together with the select board, but not just the select board, but with other members of the community. We have a previous select board member who calls this planet Lexington. And we have a very interesting culture in Lexington. And so I think the success would be sort of learning how to work through Lexington's culture, which has incredible community engagement. And so reflecting and valuing the contributions from the community as well as working together tightly with the select board.
Thank you. That was very enlightening.
Thank you. So we do want to, on behalf of the whole board, I want to thank you again for taking the time today to share your thoughts, insights and experience. We do really appreciate your thoughtful responses and the clarity with which you address them and your perspective on the challenges and opportunities we have that we're facing in Lexington is very invaluable to us, especially as we consider a new town manager. So colleagues, we will take a brief break as we prepare for the next candidate. And we look forward to further conversations.
Thank you so much.
Lessons learned. First, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our second candidate for today for the town manager position, Steve Bartha. We do recognize that interviewing in this type of a public setting is unique and challenging. And we want to know, I want you to know that we really appreciate your willingness to be part of this transparent process.
Been ten years and I do not miss this.
This morning, our goal is to get to know you better, understand your vision and hear how you would like to approach opportunities and challenges facing Lexington. You will have an opportunity to talk with us for about an hour this morning. We have prepared a series of questions that cover various aspects of town management from strategic planning to community engagement. Please feel, feel free to take your time with the responses. There is no rush. We want to hear your thoughts fully. And if at any point you need us to repeat a question, please don't hesitate to ask. We're happy to do so. We do, again, understand this format is a bit different than a typical interview. So please know that our intention is to create an environment where you're comfortable sharing your ideas and experiences. And we're here to learn from you as much as to evaluate you. And we look forward to some open dialogue.
Thank you.
So each select board member will take turns asking questions. After each question, you'll have time to respond. And we may ask some follow-up questions for clarification if needed. And once we have completed the questions, we'll provide you with an opportunity to share any additional thoughts or ask us any questions that you may have. And with that, I'll have each board member introduce themselves.
Jill Hay.
Joe Pato.
Douglas sent you the chair.
Good morning. I'm Suzy Derry.
I'm Mark Sandy.
Okay. So our starting for you is a intro slash question.
Sure.
So if we, we were to select you for this role, please give us a brief one to two paragraph description that we would use in a press release to announce to the community why you were the right choice for this job.
That's a new question. I like that. Well, I think that, so I've, I've been in local government in a, in a management position for fifteen years. And I'm as excited today as I was when I started about this work. We may at some point get a chance to talk a little bit about what caused me to pursue this career. But one of the, one of the stories that will sort of, this is going to not be part of those two paragraphs because this is, this is a sidebar, but you said I could take my time. So I'm going to share that years ago, when I was participating in a leadership ICMA program through the, my professional association, we had the, the great privilege of spending a lot of time with the outgoing executive director, a man named Bob O'Neil, who was a longtime county administrator in Virginia, but also an academic. And he said that his, his favorite part of his job over the many decades that he spent doing that job was the taxi rides and then the Uber rides to and from airports in the thousands of cities that he visited. Because he said that the, all of the cab drivers had really strong and positive feelings about what they wanted their towns and cities to be, and they certainly had plenty of complaints. But he never met a person who didn't want their community to be worse tomorrow than it was today. Everybody wants a better tomorrow. I found that inspiring when he shared that. And I think that's sort of what, what you'll get from me is someone who's enthusiastic and curious about local government and doesn't take for granted how lucky I am to work in service to communities and to, to share my, my expertise and my, my character and my skillset to try to help stakeholders find the tools and resources they need to reach that better tomorrow. So you, I think a theme that you'll, you'll hear from me throughout the day, you, I will leave with humor and humility. I take my job seriously. I do not take myself seriously. I think that's important. People on my team understand that. They embrace that. And, you know, the, the feedback I've received from my select board members and department heads is good luck, but not too much because they don't want me to leave Danvers. So this is both very exciting and also a little bit bittersweet because as I said, this is the first time in ten years that I've even thought about going through a process like this. And as a, as a journalism minor, I can help you rewrite all that because I know that that is not going to fit into a paragraph.
Steve, let me just make sure the microphone is on. Do you want to do a tap on the top? Okay, maybe just talk a little closer.
Sure.
Some of the folks in the back sort of are going to hear every word you say. Ms. Hay.
Thank you. So our first question, not for press release, is that building trust and strong working relationships among the senior management team is crucial for cohesive leadership. Can you describe a time when you had to address a lack of trust or poor collaboration either with or within your senior management team? And how you approached rebuilding that trust and what strategies you used to ensure lasting positive working relationships?
Sure. I'll share an experience from early on in Danvers. You may find this hard to believe that public works departments and recreation departments don't always see eye to eye on priorities and what should go first or go last in some cases. And we're fortunate, and this will be another theme. I inherited an incredible leadership team and, and rebuilding that team over the last decade has been, has been sort of central to my role. The board was clear about that when they hired me. But, you know, there was friction between the two departments. We would go through the budget process. We would, we would have a, a list of projects that were approved and ready to go. And there was some frustration within the recreation department that the, that the projects that were critical and vital to their scope often took back burner to some of the public works projects. The, the director, and again, both directors are exceptional, were exceptional. In fact, one of them, I believe, almost took a job in Lexington until we convinced him to stay in Danvers. He's still there. But the, you know, the, the conversation, that conversation started with individual meetings. The recreation director came to me, talked to me about it. I had a conversation with the public works director. In our organization, public works does serve run point on a lot of the capital work and capital projects. We, you know, we have our bill, we have a buildings warrant, a grounds warrant for all of the playground and park projects. We do, the DPW office has historically controlled that, that budget. So, you know, those who control the purse strings control the, the order of operation. And I, I'd worked previously in an organization where the, the relationship between those departments, prior, I was an assistant town manager in Avon. And when I got there, they had, they had housed a public works grounds employee in the recreation department specifically to ensure that the recreation projects got the attention they deserve. So the, the DPW director understood what we talked about in terms of, you know, the, the, the street project may be your highest priority, but repairing the playground at John George Park is something that they're getting phone calls about on a daily basis. So it starts with, and I think another theme is that you'll hear about with the R we have is relationships. And you have to have meaningful relationships with your senior management team beyond just knowing the names of their kids, you know, knowing that my finance director's kids are interested in wrestling and cheer, not just that their names are Will and Sam, knowing that your chief assessor shares a hobby of home brewing, knowing that your, you know, so having more than just sort of professional relationships, not necessarily drinking buddies, but a deep understanding and an appreciation and an interest in the people you work with. So in this case, the, 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 the public works director sort of heard, committed to make progress in that regard. Next year, we were having the same conversation that, that the second budget cycle was a, a meeting with the recreation director, the DPW director. And, you know, the, the happy story is people just change their approach instantly. Sometimes, as, as was the case with, with this particular example, it takes a couple of budget cycles to get people to, to see how the pieces fit together, to see the importance of, because, you know, it, the same resident who's upset about the pothole probably also has a kid who's going to the playground. So these are not, we don't have separate buckets of stakeholders. They all have complicated and, and varied interests and varied, and varied needs. So I think it's about relationships and it's about communication. And, you know, I think we're in a much better spot, you know, now ten years in than we were two years in, in that regard.
Thank you. So recognizing blind spots and accepting feedback are keys to effective leadership. How do you affected, how do you actively seek out and accept feedback? Can you provide an example where you were given difficult feedback and how you adapt it because of?
The, let me think about that and make sure that I. So one of, one of the things I, I, I mentioned in my too-long press release that humor, humor and humility are important to me. I am the first to acknowledge that I don't have all the answers. I'm the first to acknowledge that when I make a mistake, I'm quick to own that mistake. I will apologize for that mistake. I'm also quick to forgive mistakes in others. I think that's crucial to building teams and trust is knowing that there's space to make mistakes. The way that I seek out feedback is, again, I'm going to, I'm going to keep coming back to the theme of relationships, you know, I, we, we talk. You know, I, we, we talked in the first interview about a relationship with the board and you are, you are five individuals and you are a group. So there are really six different relationships that are involved with a manager and a board. You know, working, working as partners. So, and I, I said this prior as well, I have some, some board members text me every day. Um, some want to talk on the phone. Uh, one board member uh, who lives across the street from Town Hall, he likes to have coffee in his back room. Um, but it's, it's constantly asking for that feedback. I think you can't wait for people to provide the feedback. Um, you have to be, you have to seek it out. Um, and I think that if, if you have a growth mindset and you're curious, you're going to want that. An example. And we, we talked a little bit about this in the first interview. I think the question was sort of a a controversial decision or something. Um, and the, the uh, the issue that I shared was we, we had a very ugly uh, situation in Danvers in 2020 related to the thin blue line flag on a fire truck. And um, I think I, I wanted to clarify one thing I said in that interview is that the, the, when the call came in from a resident who was very concerned about that display on the truck, um, I ordered it down. And um, the, the sense, the, I saw some eyebrows and I, I think what I wanted to sort of clarify from that is that in the, the, the governing documents in any particular community delineate authority and who's responsible for what. In Danvers, the town manager, uh, like in Andover's, is functions as a chief executive, the, the document goes back to 1949. In that instance, uh, town property, town assets fall under the jurisdiction of town manager. Um, it was important to me to get that off the truck. It would have been a lot easier for me if in Danvers, the, that was a board decision and I could have gone to them and said, here's my perspective, here's the guidance I would provide. Please, you guys make that decision. I don't want to make that decision. Um, but I had to make the decision I did. And, and the, the lesson that I learned and the feedback that I got from um, one of my board members was um, you didn't have to do it so quickly. You could have taken your time. And what I shared in the first meeting is that in hindsight, I would have sat with the union presidents to explain why the action was necessary rather than ordering them to take it down because I knew that it was causing harm in the community to see it on a, on a town vehicle. And I took that to heart. I mean, I think that, that was, that was excellent feedback. Um, and I certainly have grown from that. And I think that um, yeah.
Thank you.
So in municipal government, achieving strategic goals requires more than just a plan. It demands responsiveness, adaptability and effective delegation. Especially when faced with unforeseen challenges. With sustainability becoming increasingly crucial and the lessons learned from the COVID-19 pandemic, how have you successfully leveraged your team to navigate these complexities? And can you share any specific examples where you overcame unexpected obstacles uh, such as those related to sustainability initiatives or in response to the COVID-19 crisis while still working toward a strategic plan goals?
Thank you for the question. Sustainability uh, in Danvers is, and I won't drill into what was in the essay questions, but we, we operate our own electric department, which gives us a lot of flexibility and control over um, our, our posture with respect to sustainability. We went through uh, a uh, sustainability plan process. It looks like in parallel to the plan that Lexington adopted. We actually use the same consultant. And uh, there was, there, there was and is resistance to that work. And I think part of, part of the reason for that is that um, Danvers is a complex community politically, uh, organizationally, demographically. I was interested, actually, this is off topic, but uh, Lexington is 6,000 more residents in Danvers, but we have almost the same number of registered voters. Um, people are engaged. Uh, and we, um, although the uh, it's a community that generally leans Democrat at presidential elections, um, it's a two to one margin in Danvers, although both parties are dwarfed three to one by the unaffiliated. But there is a diversity of viewpoints and a diversity of voices in Danvers. People are not afraid to, to engage and be heard. Um, Lexington might know something about that as well. Um, so we, we had leadership from the board or our chair at the time uh, became very interested in resiliency and sustainability and asked the organization, they set, the board set as one of its objectives. Um, which is a key point in strategic uh, decision making is that the um, the, the voice of the board is a powerful voice that is a leader. It's a voice of leadership in the community. And so if staff can bring to the board ideas or concepts um, and work with the board to sort of perfect those, make those the um, the goals of the organization. It land, it's, it's wind in the sails for staff to then do the work and to find the, the consultants to help with the work. So, so the board adopted a sustainability and resiliency plan as one of their strategic goals several years ago. Um, we engaged with a consultant. And we um, have made great strides in rolling out um, uh, rebates and programs. We're, we're, we're way behind Lexington on the solar front, but we're doing, we've got solar on three, three schools in the last two years and we're um, getting ready to do a large um, solar array at our cap landfill. But we get, we get resistance and we get friction on social media all the time from the folks in town who think this is, this is bogus and popping cock and all that stuff. What we have done and how I think we have provided strategic leadership is that similar to Lexington, as part of that process, we established a stakeholder committee, essentially the steering committee for the resiliency work. It includes the chair of our light board. Um, it includes people from our planning department. It includes residents who are engaged in the field. Um, and it gives us uh, people who are not just banging away at the keyboard, but out there having conversations and talking about the, the importance and talking about the return on investment. Um, when we, when we do strategically electrifier, electrifier fleet um, and things of that nature. Switching over to COVID for a minute, I think like every town and city, we were trying to figure out on the fly how to um, become a remote government. And um, credit to our IT department, and I, I hope I get a chance to talk at some point about the work they're doing. Uh, but we have an incredible IT director who uh, I felt like 30 second, 30 seconds into COVID was ready to sort of flip the switch for us. And um, we, we recognized, again, like a lot of places, that um, remote work works, that uh, not every employee, but plenty of employees can be very productive working uh, from their home office. Um, or in my case, from the basement because my wife uses our home office. And you know, similar to sustainability, we, we, we caught our fair share of criticism for, you know, people are, how do we know they're working? This is, you know, this is, this is typical government. You, you, I'm sure you heard it all as well. But I think the, so the resistance to that was more, I think, frustration like everybody was experiencing during the pandemic. But the, I think the, the strategic piece that, that became important for us. Um, and I think has helped us coming out of COVID is that um, we were one of the first communities to really re, not everywhere, but we really recognized early on that um, this, that establishing a remote work policy for the duration of that crisis is something that we're probably going to have to keep and want to keep after it was over. So we, we spent a considerable amount of time and credit to my assistant time Andrew Jim Breaker, who really took the lead on that. Um, we put together a telecommuting uh, work policy that um, somebody from Lexington may have asked for a copy of at one point uh, as, as Lexington was establishing its own. Um, but that has been an immensely helpful policy for us over the past four years in terms of recruiting new employees. Because um, we realize, I think everybody realizes that salary isn't necessarily the most important component anymore in terms of recruitment and retention. It's um, flexibility with your time, uh, work-life balance. So the um, that was more of an opportunity than an obstacle. I think the obstacle for us has been more on this, on the resiliency front, but I, just to be very clear, that's from a very uh, small but vocal uh, part of our account. So we're, we're full speed ahead, but it's there.
So uh, Lexington is committed to foster an inclusive community. Our recent internal equity audit highlighted the need for greater diverse with diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, DEIB, knowledge, skills and cohesive leadership engagement. As town manager, how would you lead the efforts to address these needs? How would you define and measure success? And additionally, how would you expand these initiatives to our outward facing community?
It's a great question. And actually, this is what I'm excited to answer. Um, I mean, I should say that I'm excited to answer all your questions. This is one that I'm particularly excited to answer. I mentioned in a prior, in a prior question that, you know, when I was hired in Danvers, succession planning was, was sort of centered in the, in the position profile. My predecessor had a, a well-established team that had been together for a long time. And they knew that as um, the new person came in and the magic number uh, for the retirement system came and went, people were going to, there was going to be turnover. And I, I inherited a uh, a high performing uh, leadership team. Um, and we've rebuilt a high performing leadership team uh, in the town. And I think one of the, you know, we've built schools and we've, we, we achieved the AAA bonding. We've done a lot of things, but the, what I'm most proud of in, in the town of Danvers is um, the leadership team that we have put together over the past decade. Um, when I, we've doubled the number of women in leadership positions on that uh, group. Um, and in 2014, we had zero non-light members of our management team. We're approaching 20% now. This is a talented team. Um, and uh, this team was built through um, investing in staff that we already had. Uh, we are, my wife said, don't use the word zealous. I'm going to use the word zealous. We're borderline zealous about staff development and succession development. Um, we've, we've put, um, I think the second most graduates through the MMA Suffolk Leadership and Local Government Certificate Program of any community um, other than I think Needham. Uh, we are big on cross uh, department uh, exposure. If we have an employee who expresses an interest in collective bargaining, we find a seat for them at the table to learn more about that. And so we've, we have diversified our leadership team not by being sort of explicit about it, but by identifying and investing in the employees we already had. Um, and it happened naturally and it happened over the course of a number of years. Um, some of the positions that are included in that list are, we have a police captain um, who has an inside track to potentially become our police chief someday. Um, our town engineer, our town accountant, our retired administrator, um, our DPW business manager and more. And taking the long route to the, to the specifics of the question, but also our DEI. Uh, and we, we created and filled that position um, several years ago, and I'll, I'll pause and uh, and offer a hat tip to Martha Duffield, who Lexington took from Danvers uh, to be your first equity inclusion director. She was really a catalyst for us in our organization coming out of 2020 in the George Floyd um, incident to help us start to really be systematic and uh, about how we were thinking about these things. Danvers is a largely um, white community, but it is three times as diverse as it was a generation ago. So both of those facts are true um, with the same data set. So it's changing. And I think Martha, even though she didn't live in Danvers, helped us recognize that before it was really becoming something that everybody was sort of digging into. One of the silver linings of our thin blue line fiasco was um, that a working group came together with representatives from public safety and our interfaith council and our town meeting and our select board and other interesting community stakeholders. And we developed a report and a list of action items that we thought we needed to um, go through to become a more welcoming community. And centered in that report was the need for a uh, position that was responsible for equity and inclusion. We um, advertised that position. We, we kept it over, open for a long time because we were concerned about finding the right person, not first person. Um, we started to catch some, some criticism um, from our human rights and inclusion committee for how long the process was taking. But we ultimately hired somebody from Tufts University, Jasmine Romon, who has been an excellent uh, fit for us. And we have approached this almost sort of in the opposite uh, order as Lexington, it looks like, where um, we're about to conduct our uh, an internal equity audit. Um, but her priority for the first year and a half in the role was really external facing. So she worked with the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee. She works with our library director. She works with our superintendent. Um, they've done some really sort of provocative and thoughtful uh, conversation series through the library. Um, they have expanded their portfolio of events uh, for many years. Uh, Human Rights and Inclusion did an MLK event, a uh, declaration of independence reading um, and, and a pride celebration. Um, they have now introduced um, a very um, so, well-supported Juneteenth celebration, a Latinx celebration, a race immunity day. And so they've, they're bringing more and more people into these conversations. Um, she's working and supporting community groups that have sort of organized around, around these themes. Um, so I think that we have, we're, we're actually sort of in the community doing the work and now um, coming out of, it's been, I hate to say post-COVID because it feels like COVID was like a lifetime ago, but uh, in the last year or so, we've really put our uh, employee training schedule and counter back together um, in full force. And we're starting to fold in um, training specific to bias um, in those sorts of things. And, and we're hoping that the internal equity audit is going to give us more specific and tangible things to work on um, within the organization uh, from a policy perspective and from a, from a personal perspective.
Thank you. So uh, Lexington has developed, has adopted the MBTA compliance zoning. And we've been exceeding minimum requirements and several projects are already in the pipeline comprising several hundred units. As town manager, how would you ensure that the town's infrastructure can support the new development while maintaining quality of life for residents? And what steps would you take to proactively address potential issues? And how would you keep the community engaged and informed throughout this process?
Thank you. Um, so we're, we're dealing with, I think, communities that have embraced that law, Danvers has embraced that law, Lexington clearly has embraced that law. Um, are serious about how to make it work. I think first is just a huge kudos. Um, I was very unpopular at MMA board meetings, talking uh, preaching to the choir about the fact that you can't hold affordable housing as a core value and local control over zoning in all circumstances is a core value because those values don't always work well together. In this case, the state came in um, sort of put their money where their mouth was. I think, you know, Governor Hilli has done that more recently with, with the Affordable Homes Act. But communities have embraced it, have, have been serious about, have to be serious about how that, how that works. Um, we have a project, we've, we've established, we established a 40-yard district in our downtown um, years before the MBTA uh, law. And then we were actually updating our zoning code in, in late uh, 20, late 2019, early 2020. And uh, as the law was sort of formulating, obviously 2021 it was adopted, but when the MBTA rules came out, it became clear to us that if we wanted to comply with the law, we could simply have rezoned underneath a massive condominium, condominium project that had been built 15 years earlier um, to, to be in on paper compliance with the law, which seemed ridiculous to us. And so we put a lot of thought into um, the, the, the thing you hear in Danvers all the time is we don't want to be Beverly, which I don't quite understand because Beverly is a delightful city. Um, but we were very, very intentional about um, height setbacks, you know, blending in with existing residential neighborhoods, um, finding the right density that uh, not only satisfies the law, but also is something that will be built. Because I think towns and cities have a habit of uh, creating zoning that they think is going to work. And then it sits there for 20 years and nobody builds anything. Um, it sounds like Lexington probably hit the nail on the head if you're, if you have projects uh, in the pipeline. Um, so one of the first things I looked at uh, in, in preparation for the interview today, you, we have 28,000 residents and 3,500 students. You have 34,000 residents and 7,000 students. Um, people clearly are living and, and working in Lexington because they want access to the schools. But that's, that's six tenths of a student per um, housing unit today. I think you have roughly 12,000 housing units. What we have is experienced in Danvers and what I, I'd have to look at the applications and, and, and um, some of the build out analysis that you guys did, but if you're building a hundred units and you're averaging six tenths of a student in existing housing, which is typically larger single family housing, what we've seen in Danvers is, you know, in our, in the project that's going to be completed this winter, we have 150 units. The overwhelming majority of them are studio and one bedroom. There are a handful of two bedroom and then a smaller handful of three bedroom. So the, the, the prac, in practice, you're, you're unlikely to see the same number of students landing in uh, our downtown project as you would in the traditional single family neighborhood. So I think you start with that is acknowledging if these projects are done well and, and what we wanted in Danvers was as those downtown units become available, uh, the, the family that raised their kids and put them through school is going to downsize to the downtown. And then other family can backfill the single family home. And now you have more kids in the school system. Which is a former teacher, I think is, and as a town manager, I think is, is a good thing. I think a community that uh, doesn't uh, have uh, schools that people want to be part of uh, is not, is, that's a bad sign. I'm, I grew up in Michigan and you can go to the Midwest and see what happens when towns and cities stop replenishing um, themselves with young families. So the first question is, you, school capacity, right? What, what is the existing capacity across the elementary schools at each elementary school? Um, one of the things we did in Danvers in, in preparation for both our new downtown zoning and the construction of our new elementary school was get really granular in the clerk's office. We were able to, we didn't look at names, but we had birth certificates by street. So we can see where our people being born. We know in four years, those kids are going to hit the schools. Um, our, so, our school committee uh, proactively adopted some flex zones within. Our, our school committee proactively adopted some flex zones within the existing elementary districts to make sure that as projects came and as population changed, we were able to give, have flexibility and direct families to the schools where there were seats available for the kids. So I think that, you know, in answer to the question, I think first is understanding, I, I would have to understand the build out analysis that was done in preparation for the zoning. It's, it's vital and I, and I think I addressed this in my essay. When you're talking about housing, it, it's critical that you have everybody who touches housing, talking to each other, your engineering department, your school department, your planning department, the, the boards and committees that, that vote on these things. Because you can't, because you, many things, both in MBTA zoning and Affordable Housing Act are by right. So it's not as simple as saying we're good. We don't want any more people to move here. We don't want to see any more development. The courts have consistently overturned, so that's not an option. So it, you have to plan for it. You have to be prepared for it. You have to know what's coming and that can only happen if people are talking to each other. The other thing, and I, again, I, I, I don't have familiarity with, with the town, but what, one of the things we knew in Danvers is that once we adopted this new zoning, not every parcel is the same, right? Where our big project is being built right now had been the site of a, a fine lighting manufacturer, family owned business for eighty years. And the family had assembled several acres worth of parcels. Those are not, that is not the norm. So the, in, for this project, the assemblage was already done and somebody was able to come in and build a project to scale. After those unicorn parcels are developed, it becomes harder and harder to find projects that are going to generate a hundred, two hundred, three hundred units at a time. So I think it's a, and again, I, I don't know what the parcel maps look like, but it's acknowledging that, and that's not always easy for people to take because they think the first project is going to look just like the second, the third, the fourth and the fifth project. And in five years, it's going to be a different town. And I think in reality, you, you probably will see a, a deluge upfront, but it gets harder, just like it, to find traditional subdivision space in towns and cities. It's, it only gets harder, not easier because the easy stuff gets done first.
You mentioned conducting a build out analysis. Could you just say a couple more words about what a build out analysis is and what you'd be looking at?
Yeah. When, when we, when we rezoned our ninety acre downtown, we looked at all of the setbacks, densities, height limitations within the zoning district that we were focused on. And you can calculate what, what would be the maximum number of units by right with a special permit. We have some flexibility in our zoning where the first few special permits might get consideration, but once we're, once we're close to the, the, the cap of, of units, it becomes harder to get those. So we knew when we developed our, our zoning based on assumptions today, we were looking at between eight hundred and fifty and eleven hundred units over the course of the, we figured through business cycles. So thirty years, we would see all of these units come, come in line. And we're, you know, three years in, we've seen about two hundred units permitted or built. And it's already slowing down a little bit. So the, the analysis is figuring out if, if, if somebody were able to control this district and, and build out two of the steps we've put in our zoning bylaw, how many units are we talking about? We got a little more nuanced in terms of, we wanted to see traditional subdivisions stop getting developed in the green parts of town. So we started to offer trade offs for density bonuses in our zoning. If, if you go and talk to the eight neighbors on Maple Street and get them to sell you the, the conservation rights for their backyards, which could be a very ugly looking subdivision with a sneaking drive, we'll give you an extra three units in the downtown and they love that because infrastructure and green space is really expensive. And if they can squeeze through more units into the downtown where we're telling them we want the housing, it's, that's a win-win. It's good for everybody.
So the relationship between the town manager and the select board is a, is crucial for effective governance. How do you envision a truly collaborative partnership where both vision and execution are aligned? And can you share any specific strategies you would use to foster trust, to ensure clear communication and to navigate any potential disagreements? Keep the town moving forward?
I'm glad you said navigate disagreements and not avoid disagreements because tongue halfway in cheek, there has to be disagreement. I mean, I think a, a functioning team has to have disagreements from time to time, or you're not talking about the right things. I, I would, I would start by stepping back and saying that, you know, management, management style is developed over time. It's a function of many different things. It's a function of your education, right? I have a master's in public administration, so I'm well versed in organizational theory and budgeting and human relations and all that stuff. It's also a function of your experience. I spent five years working in, in Avon, Connecticut, which is a very affluent suburb of Hartford. The, the approaches that worked in Avon are a little bit different from the approaches that worked in Danvers. I worked for the city of Ann Arbor for a year and a half, which is a completely different organization and culture than the other one. So I think it's, it's acknowledging that you have to be able to adapt. You have to be flexible. And I'm just going to keep coming right back to, I think you, you said trust and I think everything is built on trust. Trust is your foundation and it's your currency. I read a great book a couple of years ago, The Speed of Trust, and it really helped me articulate, you know, it's, it's a combination of competence and it's a combination of character. Character is doing what you say you're going to do, being honest, being fair. Competence is having the requisite skills to get in the door and do the job, but then following through, delivering results. It takes time to do that. You don't, you don't walk into any family, organization, job and, and have the benefit of trust right out of the gate. That's something that's earned. I, I mentioned it a few times and I'll, I'll just say it again. I think humor, humility, honesty. I'm a hard worker. I'm curious. I'm going to ask you guys a lot of questions. You have to invest in those relationships because the, the, the relationships and the connections and the interests are what allow you to develop trust and develop bonds. And so when you come to a disagreement, you have a, a deep understanding of where the person is coming from and that you don't just write them off as being disagreeable for the sake of, of disagreement. There was more to your question and I completely lost what the beginning part of it was.
It was really, well, the beginning was just acknowledging the, the crucial nature of the relationship and then how would you envision that collaborative partnership where both vision and execution are aligned? Cause I think you answered the second part, which is how you would navigate.
Sure. So I think once, you know, the, the, the way that I have been successful in Danvers in building the trust and the, the framework for having the, the alignment and the execution come together is, as I just said, having, having relationships with the board members, understanding what their, you know, what, what caused you to run for the board? Why did you choose? This is, this is, this is a scary seat, but that's also a scary seat because you, none of you have to do what you're doing. You can stay private citizens and not get yelled at and criticized. So each of you probably chose to run for that seat for a very different reason. A manager who isn't curious about why, in my opinion, is not doing their job. They need to understand that. They need to know who their board members are, what makes them tick, what they're, what are they concerned about? And I think it cuts both ways. I think that the manager also has to not just be an employee, but also a person. So you understand what my frustrations are and what makes me tick and, you know, get to know my, know what our priorities are. And that way, when it's, you know, a, a housing application before the planning board or a, a resiliency project that's very expensive that people are complaining about, your, the starting point is, is an understanding of, of the why, and then you can figure out how to move forward because truly at the end of the day, everything we do is math and policy and law, right? There's, there are options that we can consider. They have to be within the confines of the law. There isn't always a right answer. And I think what you have to, whether you're in a community where efficiency is more important than process or process is more important than efficiency, you just, you have to understand that as a, as a professional, as an employee, your job is to provide information, make recommendations and then execute the decision once they're made, knowing that the collective decision may not be the decision that you would have made if you were pulling the levers all by yourself. But again, going back to the, the Bob O'Neill comment, I think that's what makes this job really fun is that you never know from year to year, what the priority is going to be. We had a very public dispute with Adam Sandler three years into my time in Danvers because he wanted to fill in a neighborhood where commercial activity was disallowed. And I got yelled at for that. Why do you hate movies? Why do you hate Adam Sandler? What's wrong with you? And the answer wasn't any of those things. It was, we need to update the bylaws. It's going to take a couple of months. Everybody wants to do this. We have to take it through the process. We have to go to town meeting and get, and ask their opinion because ultimately it's their decision. Nobody else's.
Thank you. So this is a scenario. Imagine you're in a select board meeting where critical and time sensitive decisions need to be made. The board feels it does not have all the necessary information it was expecting. Tension is rising among board members, the staff and the public in attendance. As town manager, how would you navigate this situation to maintain trust and ensure a productive discussion? What immediate steps would you take to ensure that the decision-making process remains focused, constructive and aligned with the town's strategic goals?
I'll start by saying if, if the decision had to be made within forty-eight hours, that would be tricky because the truth is we can always schedule a meeting as long as it's properly noticed and we give ourselves a couple of days. So very rarely do any of us have to make decisions that are, that are that time sensitive that you wouldn't have a chance to pause, step back and reengage. I think that again, you know, in, in my role, I, I'm, I'm going to do my best to make sure that I'm talking to staff, engaging with staff to provide the information that the board has either explicitly asked for or that I, that I think that they're looking for. But in the event you're describing where the room is packed, people are unhappy and the board is unhappy. I think acknowledging that we, I'm sorry, you know, we don't have that. We'd be happy to pull that together and if you give us a day, we can give you what you're looking for. I think that's, it's as simple as that. I think acknowledging acknowledging it. And importantly, I think asking questions, making sure that we leave that setting with a very clear understanding of what the gaps are, what information is required, recommendations versus options. And then we, and then we go back to the wheel.
Thank you.
So in municipal leadership, there's often tension between addressing individual resident concerns and upholding town-wide policies are long-term goals. Sounds like Adam Sandler. Yeah. As town manager, how do you balance being responsive to resident complaints when they are in conflict with established policies or broader town objectives? Can you share an example when you had to address a situation where residents' individual interests were adversely affected by a town policy and how you handled that response?
That never happens, so I don't have. I, I think that one of the things that has been central and important to me since before I got into local government, integrity, accountability, ethics, fairness, consistency. They were important to me as a, as a senior patrolier in the Boy Scouts. They were important to me as a grad student. They're important to me as a town manager. I've served on the Ethics Committee for the State Association. I currently serve on the Ethics Committee for our National Association. And, and again, I'm, I'm sorry for taking the long way there, but I think, I think that's important, that, that foundation because one of the things, they're sort of two different, I'll give an example in a minute, but there are times when a resident is asking for something that is not inconsistent with town policy. And when board members say, hey, so and so asked me about this, I'll say to staff, I'll say, we'll, we'll take care of it. And I often say to staff, please don't take care of it tomorrow morning. Because even if it was planned for tomorrow morning, then it looks like we're, we're just bouncing back and forth and jumping when then, you know, if, if you're planning to address that street on Thursday, go on Thursday, deal with it on Thursday. We can communicate that. In instances where somebody's asking for something that is inconsistent with town policy and an example from the summer, we've done a tremendous amount of paving work in Danvers using our ARPA dollars and the increased chapter ninety dollars. And our crews have been flat out and doing incredibly impressive work. But as everybody knows, it's super disruptive when they're doing your street. You're happy a year later when it's smooth and the, the water mains are replaced, but in the meantime, it's dusty and it's bumpy. And, and we had a resident who was, was pretty insistent that the, the paving work that we did had created a real flooding problem on, on their property. We, we had the error maps from before and after the project. We suspected that wasn't the case. But we had our street supervisor, who was wonderful, meet in the field with the, with the resident, talk it through with the resident a couple of times. We ultimately agreed to make some modifications to the curving and the slope to see if that would solve a problem that we were pretty sure had been there already. But again, you know, in acknowledgement of how disruptive these projects can be, we do go out of our way to look for ways to be responsive and, and, and to the, to the needs or concerns of, of neighbors and after a couple of attempts to set, to solve the problem, it remained adversarial. And so there are times when, in that instance, I ended up getting pulled into the, the situation. You know, we, delegation is, 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 you know, we're, we have three hundred and forty employees and, and there's a lot going on. So there's a lot of work that gets done at the department head level and the division head level that doesn't necessarily involve the manager's office because I have trust and confidence in the people doing the work. But in that case, Chuck came and said, I think you need to talk to this person. He's unhappy. So in that case, it's, it's explaining what our pavement policy, you know, what is the road? Blame on the input. What is the policy in terms of, you know, repairs and restoration? Walking through the steps that we're taking to try to make things better. And at the end, once you've explained the, the why, people aren't, oftentimes people still remain unhappy, but you, you can leave the conversation knowing that you were consistent and, and you took the time to explain what the policy is, knowing that, that all you're never going to make everybody happy all the time.
So economic development in Lexington involves a vibrant downtown, a tourism base and larger commercial entities. As town manager, how would you support an economic development strategy that encourages local small businesses and attractions while also pursuing opportunities to bring in larger companies that could boost the town's tax base and employment? Can you share an example from your experience where you had to navigate encouraging growth and maintaining community character? Further, in April of two thousand twenty-five, Lexington will celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Lexington. We had been planning for over two years for what is shaping up not to be a local, regional or state event, but a national and international event. We have faced and continue to face significant challenges, especially with funding and logistics and time is moving. Can you talk about a strategy to help move this significant one-time event forward while balancing the other items that are on the town manager's plate while working with local, regional, state and federal partners?
That is a heck of a question. I'm going to start with the last part and then I'm going to beg you to read the first part again, but I think with respect to the, the celebration, which if I, I think it's two hundred and thirty-four days as of today, if I, my eyes didn't deceive me on the way in. One, one of the things I noticed in, in reviewing your annual report, both is, is twofold. One is the, sort of the palpable enthusiasm about the, not event, but the series of events that are planned around that milestone. But also the infrastructure work that has been done and it looks like is still ongoing in the vicinity of where these events are going to happen. I think this is, maybe this is low hanging fruit, maybe it isn't, but I think the, the first priority would be sitting with staff and the engineers and facilities to make sure that the, that the work that's being done to get the infrastructure and the town ready for the thousands of visitors are on track to be done before they arrive. Because if, if roadwork on your quiet side street is disruptive, I can only imagine what it would be like if there were delays in some of the infrastructure projects that were being done in anticipation of that event. Danvers is planning a much smaller event and we, we like to point out, I think we had the second most soldiers lost in that battle other than maybe Lexington, although we may, we may have more. And I think that's because the Lexington soldiers showed the Danvers soldiers the way to the front. So we're I probably would do the same. So, you know, the, I believe you're chairing the, the committee that's working on that, if I read correctly. So I'm sure you are putting in a lot of nights and weekends right now to try to get things teed up for that. I noted the conversations with town meeting about who we wanted to invite to participate in the event. I think the answer to your question is both simple and very complicated, which is to keep people communicating and keep people who are part of the planning process engage with one another. I would imagine that staff and, and departments are going to have a huge role to play in role to play in ensuring the successful outcome of those events. Our town just re, we just resurrected a fireworks show that hadn't been done in a decade in a new part of town. It was something that community groups really, really wanted and staff was deeply involved in the planning and execution of that event, providing police details, emergency response. We had forestry employees who showed up, you know, on their own time, who were helping to keep the trash bags full. So it's these events, there's a lot going on behind the scenes for these events to be successful. And I think that making sure that the that the committee and the manager and the staff involved and the outside groups that are they're going to play a role in this are meeting regularly and communicating regularly to make sure that there's resource alignment, to make sure that, you know, I know that the state. I I noted that I think Lexington Town Meeting approved a half a million dollars to go toward this event. But we were just talking with our state rep the other day that there are grants that have just been announced. The deadline might already be upon us. Maybe it's already passed, but we our historical society put in a request for for a small grant, but I think that's it's about communication. And I think with respect to whether it's a massive community event or a smaller community event like our fireworks show, which had about four thousand people. There's a lot that goes into that to make sure that it's successful. The manager is not going to be the answer on all that stuff, but it's important that the manager be a conduit and a and a connector to make sure that the people are communicating and planning in lockstep so that the committee isn't over here thinking one thing and staff is over here thinking something else. And then we have unnecessary conflict and a misunderstanding. And the first question I think had to do with economic development in Lexington, and I I also want to note, I really liked. I don't know if it was in the in or for the official statement where Lexington, or maybe it was a community profile, described as a as a small town with a Fortune five hundred presence. And I think that the way that you asked the question, that's what I thought of because the the techniques that will be effective in supporting a small New England downtown are very different from what a global manufacturer is looking for. We know from the research, big companies don't really care about property taxes. They care about a functional regulatory process. They want to know that there are reasonable people sitting in those seats and reasonable people sitting in the planning office and reasonable people sitting in the manager's office so that if they need to, for example, spin up, you know, manufacturing of vials for a novel vaccine that's being prepared in real time, that they don't get stuck in a two month application process to get that done. They want to know that they can come in, talk to staff, get the permit they need and get that moved. So I think that from the from the sort of corporate perspective, it's having staff that has is engaged with them, has a relationship with them. You want to be able to walk into the building and be recognized and not not look like a stranger coming in the door. You should you should have those connections. You should have those relationships. You should be having those conversations. We've I noted as well, the it looks like the the work that was done in the Hartwell corridor as part of the planning for the high school project involved conversations with property owners there about zoning changes. And we do the same thing in Danvers. We have the Liberty True Mall, which is adjacent to a Mass General Health site. And it's sort of the now that we're done with our downtown mixed use zoning, that's our next frontier. So we started two years ago sitting with Simon Properties and asking them questions. You know, what what is your long term plan? What types of investments would you make here if zoning didn't exist? How can we partner to make sure that the zoning code mirrors what you want to do in fifteen years? Right? If you're not asking those questions, then you have no idea and you might you might miss an opportunity to lay the groundwork for things like that. That's very different. So again, that's very different from what you want to do in your small town, in your in your downtown. But the the common thread there, you know, I feel like a broken right, it's relationships. It, you know, Lexington is fortunate enough to have a dedicated economic development professional. That's a function in Danvers that is sort of shared by a couple of different employees, including a former Lexington employee, Aaron Henry. But so we we're we're sort of fitting that in where we can and and making sure that we're seen and present in our downtown. But I think having somebody who can convene a coffee, regular check in, quarterly meetings with the downtown business owners, what do you need? What's frustrating you? You know, what what can we do? What do you think about this idea? We want to do an event. Is this something that interests you? Would you participate? Would you bring tables out to the streets and and be part of that? So again, it's not a one size fits all, I think, especially in a community that is that is complex. And I would I would consider Danvers and Lexington to be complex in in similar but different ways in terms of, we also have a historic downtown. We have several industrial parks with with, you know, biomedical manufacturers. We have a we have a waterfront. And so it's not, the same approach doesn't work everywhere. And you have to, you have to have relationships with your businesses in order to to make progress. And I did I miss?
No, I think you got it wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lexington's known for strong financial management. And but there are rising costs and increasing demand for services and it's increasingly difficult balance. So as town manager, how would you approach the long term financial planning to ensure financial fiscal stability and sustainability while still making the necessary investments in infrastructure services and community initiatives? And can you give us an example of how you might, how you've had to make difficult financial decisions that have involved balancing competing priorities?
That is a great question and it's one that I mentioned when I was hired in Danvers. Succession planning was one of the key features in the community profile, so was pursuing a triple A bond rating. Danvers has a long history of being a very disciplined and fiscally conservative community. It does not share the wealth indicators that most triple A rated communities have. But there's the Z word again. We were we were sort of zealous from the very start in trying to figure out what it would take to to accomplish that. We had informal conversations with S and P. We scheduled multiple meetings with our financial advisors. We did a lot of snooping on websites from other communities. And we helped the board understand that policy was important. So my my predecessor was in the role for thirty six years. He was one of the most, he was one of the sharpest financial managers that I ever met. But nothing was written down. It was all sort of from year to year. It was consistent. The the results were consistent. The approach was consistent. But that's only because it was sort of inertia. And we recognized early on, I was a young manager. I was thirty three when they hired me. And the finance director that we actually created the position because the other thing Danvers was great at for many years was having department heads wear like five or twelve different hats. So we had a the town accountant was also the DPW business manager, was also the retirement administrator and also sort of served as the unofficial finance director for the town. So he retired, we created a finance director position. That guy was younger than than I was. And so we knew that just smiling and saying the right things wasn't going to get us anywhere with S and P because again, trust is developed over time. And just because we were not working in this organization that had a tracker didn't mean anything. Worked very closely with the select board. We got them to adopt financial policies related to net free cash at the end of town meeting, what we wanted our on assigned fund balance to look like, free cash policy, open funding policy. That got us most of the way there. And then in two thousand nineteen, we had them adopt a full comprehensive set of financial policies. And that was the year that the town got a triple A bond rating. So it took took four and a half years. And it was two things. It was setting policy and committing to policy, but also continuing to show the results that had been in place. So that's a long way, this is a theme here. You did, I just, you did tell me I had all the time I wanted to meander around in these questions, so. So we, that was a huge win. I think the town, there's a lot of pride in town because they had long considered themselves good fiscal stewards and it hadn't been reflected in the in the bond rating. And we've maintained that bond rating for the past five years now. So we're still a triple A rated bond, triple A rated community. The other thing we did in two thousand sixteen, which is two years in, was start doing a financial summit every year with the select board, the finance committee, we would invite the library trustees, the school committee, the planning board. And it was a chance to take a giant step back. And I know, I believe Lexington has a very similar structure. So we weren't we weren't recreating any wheels, but we weren't doing it. So we would bring a lot of trend analysis, not just you know, last year's results, you know, where we're projected and this year and what we think next year is going to look like, but here's what local receipts have done since nineteen ninety, two thousand, two thousand and ten. This is what we're hearing at the state. Here's the sort of the cone of uncertainty moving forward. And getting people to think much more about not just next year's budget, but five years out, ten years out. They'd always done long term capital planning, but they never really had the conversations on the revenue side to sort of complement the spending side. So I think that was that was crucial, that that we planted those seeds in two thousand sixteen and they bore fruit last year when the combination of the pandemic inflation, I know I'm not supposed to say this word, but a new trash contract in Danvers and not a district special ed cost really accelerated the trajectory we knew we were on, which was that we were going to reach a fork in the road where we either had to find new revenue or start pulling back on services. And because we had sort of conditioned and engaged with those boards over the course of six years, when we presented them with all of the policy options they had, you've you've zoned somewhat aggressively in the downtown. Do you want to zone really, really aggressively to juice growth? Because people will build it if you allow them. Do you want to revisit the decision to ban the sale of recreational marijuana? Do you want to adjust the pilot in our electric department? They they landed on a trash fee because it was it perfectly aligned with the spike in costs that we had seen. But we had started that process and started those conversations six years earlier and it made it, didn't make it easy. It was a very difficult conversation, but it allowed us to get to a point where we were presenting options and the background, the context was already there. And it and it worked. And I think that we we also, you know, apologize to Dylan Mark who heard this in the first interview, but we have a similar approach. We we have the same conversations with our unions. I'm I'm very proud of the fact that we've we've negotiated. I've led negotiations for twenty one contracts in Danvers since I started. All twenty one have been finalized without the need for a mediator. In most cases, the attorneys are never involved. Never been to the GLMC. And I think the reason for that is that we are transparent with we are as transparent with our unions as we are with our boards and committees. So last fall, we sat with all the union presidents and had the exact same conversation that we had with all the boards and committees to say, this is where we've been, this is where we are, this is where we're going. If the union presidents watch this later, hat tip to them for being a reasonable and functional group because we've been able to stay on on budget and under budget. And I think, you know, S and P has a different view. They view this as a as a negative, but the town's never had a budget override and it's never approved a debt exclusion. And they're still able to build new schools. They're still able to have police on the streets. And I think that comes through fiscal discipline. And being willing to make hard decisions, right? One example, we have a we have a debt stabilization fund that we use, which is very similar to the capital stabilization fund that Lexington created. We don't have a policy for it yet, so we're still but we 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 budget to year end surplus so that we have funds to put in the debt stabilization so that we can buy down debt on our new school, for example. And our our headcount hasn't really changed. It's it's ticked up over the past thirty years. When you look at headcount per capita, we have fewer employees per capita than we did a generation ago. The demand is certainly there to add to headcount. We don't, but but in a community that is unlikely to support and embrace a debt, a budget override, we understand and the departments understand that we can't say yes to those positions because if you add three positions and that's three hundred thousand dollars in salary plus a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in benefits, that's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you don't have to buy down the debt on the school that you built. And if you have to increase your local receipts by that amount to cover the cost, that's you're borrowing that from next year's free cash number and we still use free cash to pay for a lot of capital assets. So there's no answer that is going to be the right answer for every community. But I think it's it's about discipline and knowing where you're trying to go. And then having people who are engaged in that conversation and willing to to make those decisions collectively.
So we're almost out of time. But we do want to ask you if there's anything else you would like to share with us or if you have any questions for the board?
Yes. I mentioned this in the first interview. And the what I said was that I was not looking for a new job. I've been in Danvers for ten years. The board gave me a new five year contract last December. It was a five oh vote. And when I talked to all the department heads and select board members this past weekend to let them know that I was interviewing for this job, the the message I got from them was consistent. It was, this sounds like a great opportunity. Good luck, but not too much luck because we don't want you to go. And so I get excited sitting here thinking about wrestling with that high school project and trying to solve housing with with you all in in the community long term. Working on centering equity and inclusion in the work that we do. But part of me is feeling a little bit like we'd be just thinking about leaving because I like the people I work with and it and it and it means a lot to me that I'm getting text messages this morning from our state rep and from my police chief saying, I hope it goes well for you and I hope you get what you want. But it's going to suck. And that feels, it feels good. It feels good to know that that we put together a team that that likes working together. We're accomplishing great things. But at the same time, my kids are ten and seven, unless I plan to retire from Danvers. If we're going to, it only gets harder to move. It only gets harder to relocate. And I think the question wasn't asked, but I just want to say that I think one of the one of the thoughts, you know, it took my wife and I two months to kind of talk this through and decide it was something that we wanted to pursue. She's a professor at Boston University. So I guess coming down this way would be a little bit close for her, but as you, when you pin Boston and kind of swing it around. But we're excited. I think we're, we've been where we've been for ten years. Excited about the idea of new challenges and new relationships. And I guess what I would, what I would leave you with is, you know, I do have a track record of trust with the people that I've worked with and worked for. I, again, I believe deeply in honesty, transparency, fairness. I know who I am. I laugh a lot. So what you, you're not going to, I'm not going to promise anybody the moon. But I will, as I've said three or four times, I'm going to lead with humor and humility. I'm going to work hard. I'm going to listen. I'm going to stay curious. I will be a good partner to the board. And I will I will do my best to position staff and volunteers to be successful. And I think that's, you know, that's really the role of the manager is to set people up to be able to succeed.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the whole board, I want to thank you for taking the time to share your insights and experiences with us today. We do appreciate your thoughtful responses and the clarity that you answered the questions. Your perspective on and challenges facing Lexington is really valuable for us to hear as we consider this next step on the town manager search. So we are going to take, thank you. We're going to take a brief break as we prepare for our next candidate. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back to order. First, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our third and final candidate for today for the town manager position, Tony Mazzuco. We recognize that interviewing in a public setting like this is unique and can be challenging. We want you to know that we really appreciate your willingness willingness to be part of this transparent process. So this afternoon, our goal is to get to know you better, understand your vision and hear how you would approach the challenges and opportunities facing Lexington. So you'll be given approximately one hour for this interview. We have prepared a series of questions that cover various aspects of town government from strategic planning to community engagement. And we want you to know that we want you to take your time with your responses. There is no rush. We want to hear your thoughts fully. And if at any point you want us to repeat a question, do not hesitate to ask. We understand that this format is different than a typical interview. But please know that our intention is to create an environment where you're comfortable sharing your ideas and experiences. And we're here to learn from you and evaluate you as much as you're here to evaluate us. And we encourage an open dialogue. So each board member will take turns asking questions. After each question, you'll have time to respond and we may follow up if there's any clarification that we need. And once we're done with the questions, we will ask that you'll have an opportunity to provide us with any additional feedback or information or if you have any questions for us. So with that, I'm just going to have each board member introduce themselves briefly.
Joe Hay.
Joe Pato.
Lucy Sandy.
Good afternoon, I'm Suzy Barrett.
Mark Sandy.
Okay. So our first question is really an introductory question. If you were selected for this role, could you give us a brief one to two paragraph description that we would use in a press release to announce to the community why you were the right choice for this job?
Sure. Great. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I sometimes struggle to keep it brief, so I'll see if I can give you that brief one or two paragraph. I've served the last seven years as the town manager in Norwood, Massachusetts. It's a full-service municipality, including a municipal electric company, a municipal broadband division and a municipal airport. I oversee all of our municipal operations as well as our shared HR and facilities departments, which were shared with the schools. Going further back, I served as a town manager in Adams, Massachusetts, out in the Berkshires, and an assistant city manager in Caribou, Maine. I have an undergraduate degree in political science and a master's in public administration from Bridgewater State University, and I'm completing a doctorate in public administration out of Valdosta State University. I have been involved in local government one way or another from a very young age. I actually got involved in high school and was going to town meeting before I was eighteen, which led me to being a town meeting member at eighteen. So town meeting and democratic involvement and education have been part of what's driven me from a very young age. I serve in a number of other capacities. I'm the CEO of our workforce region, of which Lexington is actually a part. That's a forty-three town region that oversees workforce development in this area. And I've served on the Commonwealth's Joint Labor Management Committee as well, where I negotiate collective bargaining agreements. A lot of experience in municipal government and a lot of the projects I've worked on recently in Norwood are very relevant to projects that Norwood that Lexington has going on currently.
So thank you. We both start with the numbered questions. Lucy.
Thank you very much. So our first question for you is building trust and strong working relationships among senior management team is crucial for cohesive leadership. Can you describe a time when you had to address a lack of trust or poor collaboration either with or within your senior management team? How did you approach rebuilding the trust and what strategies do you use to ensure lasting positive working relationships?
Sure. One of the biggest challenges that I face is communication internal and external. And one of the ways I build trust among my department heads is when we have our, we have a weekly department head meeting, so not very original, pretty standard process. But we make sure to share whatever's going on in town and go through it as a group, even if it's not really relevant to individual departments. So public safety will always share any major incidents they had. We may have a stormwater bylaw on a town, on the warrant for town meeting that I need to make sure all of my department heads understand why that's going forward under the warrant, why we're doing that, because each of them have their own constituencies. And even if maybe the library director or the airport manager really don't get involved in stormwater or stormwater bylaws, it's important for them to know what the whole organization is doing. Once folks have a better and a broader understanding of what's going on and that includes any issues we're facing with elected leadership, any problems in town, we make sure to discuss them at a department level, even if it's not specifically a department operation. I do know we had a case a department head had departed and there had been some issues internally with their department. With the other departments, they continue to work around that they worked closely with. So in the aftermath of that solution, we discussed it in full as a department head team, so everyone was able to get their thoughts and their feelings out there. We did an after action. We brought in a consultant who talked to the staff who were involved. I shared the results of that report with the department leadership team, so everyone knew where we'd gone, some of the mistakes we had made and where we were going forward. We followed that up with a more detailed operational review to correct some of the issues and put in place a structure for our that particular large division going forward. I believe firmly that my department heads have to have an idea of what's going on in other departments, and that's one of the ways that they're able to make sure that they're working with each other is understanding what's going on. We extend that to the schools as well, between a shared facilities department and a shared HR department. Facilities attends my department head meetings, our HR director goes to the school department's leadership team meetings just to make sure that we're all communicating. I'd love to have brought everyone together in one room, but with all the elementary principals and the high school principal probably would be a little too large, but we make sure we're all discussing what's going on in each other's major divisions to make sure that we're talking with each other, that we trust each other and that we're communicating. In terms of my leadership of department heads among the team, I'm certainly an open door policy. I believe I have an open mind policy. I need department heads to manage their departments. That's what they do. I need to know that they're going to be able to make decisions and if they need to come to me, they can. I always try to tell them that if they want my opinion, they're going to get it, but I'm okay that even though I may have made a different decision, I'm okay with the decision that they're making. And once they learn that, we are able to build that good relationship that they know that I'm going to back them. Even if I may have made a different decision, it doesn't mean that I think their decision is necessarily wrong. It's just sure I would have done it this way. I'm equally as happy with your decision and I'm going to support you in that decision, your ability to make that decision because given the size and scale of my operation, I assume it would be the same here. Lexington, I need department directors to make decisions about their departments and about their operations without having to come to me for, you know, every bit of departmental operation.
So recognizing blind spots and accepting feedback are keys to effective leadership. How do you effectively seek out and accept feedback? Can you provide an example where you were given difficult feedback and how you adapted because of it?
Sure. That's a great question. Annually, what I do is I send out a form of a three sixty evaluation to my department heads, but it's a very simplified start, stop, continue. I actually did it when I first got into Norwood more about the the town as a whole. It's probably something I would want to replicate here. Just tell me something we should start doing, something we should stop doing and something we should continue doing. I find that's the sort of feedback that I prefer as a manager. You know, you can do a full three sixty evaluation process, but at the end of the day, I don't really need to know if department heads think I should be in the office more or in the office less. That's great. I need to take some of that direction from the board, but be honest with me, what should I start? What should I stop and what should I can continue? I've often been told by a couple of people that we should stop weekly department head meetings, but I hear from an equally enlarged group, and not that I ignore my department heads, but it's not a democracy. At the end of the day, I'm going to have to, sometimes I'm going to have to decide that even if folks don't want to do something, we're going to continue doing them. But I also hear from a lot of department heads, these are great. We appreciate the level of communication. An example of that libraries, as you know, are usually very independent. Our DPW didn't even plow the library when I got to Norwood and we couldn't figure out why. So we had to sort of bring some of these these entities into loop to say, look, it's one town. We can we can pile your lot or at least manage the for it. But I find that simple feedback is a great way to be able to know what's expected of me and to know what's out there, and I'm able to take that in and and understand what my department heads are seeing and what staff are seeing. I do know that when I started in Norwood, I continued a long tradition of going to lunch every day with my assistant and the CFO. And I actually got some feedback from folks that they felt that that was a little exclusive, that it was, you know, it's Tony, Tom, Bernie going to lunch every single day and, you know, nobody else seems to go to these lunches. So I started opening it up to everyone and found that a few folks enjoy joining us and some folks realized that we would just go and Tom would talk about the Red Sox, Bernie would talk about his kids, I would try to talk about town business and they'd usually complain that they should get a stipend for having to go to lunch with me, but it it certainly hurts when you enjoy going to lunch with two folks every day and you hear people tell you that, well, we think that's exclusive. It's not exclusive. We all want to go to lunch every day. Let's all go to lunch every day. So it's a small example, but it's a it's a sort of a personal or near and dear one.
In municipal government, achieving strategic goals requires more than just a plan. It demands responsiveness, adaptability and effective delegation, especially when faced with unforeseen challenges. With sustainability becoming increasingly critical and the lessons learned from the COVID nineteen pandemic, how have you successfully leveraged your team to navigate these complexities? And can you share specific examples where you overcame unexpected obstacles such as those related to sustainability initiatives or responding to the COVID nineteen crisis while trying to still maintain and achieve strategic goals?
Great. Thank you. Good question. So I'll talk first about sustainability and some of what we've been able to achieve. When I started in Norwood about seven years ago, was able to realize that we were actually behind peer communities and a lot of our sustainability initiatives. So we needed to sort of pick up our game a little bit to at least make sure we were matching other communities. And this was coming in the context of a operational override and the context of a building project, both of which subsequently passed. We knew we had to start moving down this path of this path. In a seven-year period, we became a green community because strikingly, we weren't when I got there. It's actually the second community that I've been able to go through the green communities process with. We adopted the PACE funding program for energy enhancements. We started a sustainability commission. We launched a sustainability action plan. We have also adopted the opt-in stretch code. And we've also, we've done another other non-energy related sustainability initiatives, including we put six million dollars away for open space acquisition. We have, we received a little over a million dollars in funding to remove a dam and restore a stream to its natural habitat. So realizing we were behind and we hadn't really planned for it, I knew we had to catch up. And in a seven-year period, we were able to catch up because we pushed, making sure that we knew where we needed to go, bringing as many people along as possible, but we had to make progress in these areas because we were already too far behind. So I feel confident what we've done with sustainability. Now we have a little bit more of a plan. It's a little bit more structured as opposed to sort of a a race to make sure we could get a few things done. We did race with the opt-in stretch code. We knew we had a lot of construction coming and we wanted to get that done as soon as possible and we're happy that we did get it done. I think ours went into effect as of July first. COVID presented a number of challenges for us in Norwood. And in a funny way, most cities and towns actually planned for pandemics. And then for better, for worse, the solution was to not look at any of the plans and have everyone sort of figure out what they were doing. I'm particularly proud of our response during COVID. Most towns did a little of something. We did just about everything you could do. We set up a food pantry. We do have a regular food pantry in Norwood. It couldn't accommodate the growth that we knew we'd see. We were serving four hundred families every other week with our, we called it our Mustang food pantry. We set up a citizen call center. We we were delivering masks. We were delivering food. We kept all of our citizen services running. We set up a weekly family meals program where we actually used school cafeterias to produce family meals. And we raised the money and just gave it out for free to families during those first couple of months of the pandemic before some of the pandemic unemployment insurance had come in. When it came to starting to recover from COVID, we had been, we closed off some of our streets downtown. We created permanent outdoor seating areas that we're still doing now, five years later. So we looked at what are some of the goods that can come from this challenging time period that we're facing? We also really pushed outdoor dining, which a number of businesses in our downtown told us save their bill, save their business. We didn't just wait for it to happen. We went out, we talked to cities and towns that are opening ahead of Massachusetts, found out what they were doing. And we hit the pavement and went to our restaurants in our downtown and said, you're going to have to do this. This is what we think the state is going to do. We updated our regulations. We came in on Saturdays. We did what we had to do. My board was great. They said, look, we're going to do it. We're going to give it a shot. I don't think we charged businesses anything in the first year. We put out the barriers. We probably gave some picnic benches to some businesses here or there that are still somewhat unaccounted for, but it was about doing what we could do to save our businesses and get them to get them through because we were desperate about desperately making sure we didn't want to lose businesses as a result of it. We certainly felt we were on our own during COVID, as a lot of communities did. The state had their regulations. We knew it was on us to take care of our residents. I say I'm particularly proud of our response during COVID. Norwood has a great book written by a local historian about the nineteen eighteen flu, where the town was criticized quite a bit for its poor response, particularly in some of our lower income neighborhoods. And in sort of an update to that coming up on our hundred fiftieth anniversary, that same local historian actually wrote that something to the effect of understanding the ghost of its own past, Norwood really rose to the occasion and made sure that no resident went without. And that was our approach during COVID. We had to put a toe over the line here or there. There were a couple of rules we probably didn't necessarily follow, but we wanted to protect people. And we wanted to make sure our residents had everything they needed because we knew we were more or less on our own throughout that process. We also had a five hundred year storm hit us in the middle of COVID, June of that year, took out our hospital, caused millions of dollars worth of residential and commercial damage, and we had to put together a flood grant relief program in that process to try to help our residents out locally. We're proud of that program. That was a very difficult day in our history. We're Norwood hospitals still closed. But that was, we had COVID and then we had the loss of the hospital in the five hundred year storm, all in the same period, but we rose above them. Neither of which was planned, other than again, we had all planned for pandemics, then nobody wanted to follow the planned process. We didn't have a sustainability plan when I came in. We were able to move quickly, make adjustments and bring the community along to move to where we're at least at a point with peer communities.
Thank you.
So Lexington is committed to fostering an inclusive community. Our recent internal equity audit highlighted the need for greater diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, DEIB, DEIB, knowledge, skills and cohesive leadership engagement. As town manager, how would you lead the effort to address these needs? How would you define and measure success? And additionally, how would you expand these initiatives to our outward facing community work?
Great question. Thank you. One of the challenges we face in municipal government is some folks don't think we have a pipeline problem. We have a pipeline problem. It is not only hard to recruit people, it is hard to recruit a diverse workforce, given all of the challenges that we face in our communities. In terms of leading it, one of the things that we've started to do in terms of recruitment, because that's where it comes down to recruiting a diverse workforce. We've hired a full-time recruitment specialist to expand specifically how much time and energy we're putting into recruitment to make sure that we are casting as wide of a net as possible, that we are getting as many applicants as possible, that we are interviewing as many applicants as possible. The pool is narrowing and it's very narrow to begin with. I always remind folks, more than half of our workforce, teachers, police and firefighters, most of them have made the decision to enter that workforce before they're thirty-five. Every town around us also hires for those positions, and if you go out two towns, they're hiring for those positions. So in our goal and our effort to hire more diverse workforce, we are expanding how we're going about recruitment because we have got to double down and do twice as much. The days of getting two hundred applicants for a position aren't there. We have to work really hard to make sure we're doing the hard day-to-day work to get folks recruited. In terms of other efforts we've undertaken, we hired several years ago, we brought in a local pastor who did some facilitated some racial discussion groups among our staff. And it was wildly successful among staff, both those who would enjoy that training and those who maybe would just want to check the box. And it was part of an approach we took that we wanted to foster important conversations in the workplace to lead towards people being able to have those conversations and feeling comfortable about those conversations in the workplace. We didn't want to just do the check the box training that you can often do where and you have to do it, but you bring somebody in and there's a presentation, there's a professional trainer, and we've done those. They've been successful. We wanted to look at fostering the actual attitudes of our staff and getting people to communicate and working well together. That program has worked very well. We actually want to bring that individual back. If I could still hire him, he's been doing this program quite a bit now and it's grown quite a bit. But that's some of the efforts we've taken at a staff level that I've had to lead and had to let folks know that this is where we're going and this is how we're going to get there. In terms of leadership in the community or expanding that outward, I'm proud of the progress we've made in order in the last ten years. I was responsible for our first menorah lighting. Our library sponsored the first pride event that we had in Norwood, and now that's going three or four years and it's a full-on town-supported event, first Juneteenth event. The town took the lead in the wake of George Floyd's murder murder in twenty twenty in facilitating some community prayer sessions and some community conversations. And that was town government that took the lead and in particular, me saying, we need to have these conversations. I don't necessarily need to be the person at the front of those conversations, but it has to happen and we have to be able to do it. And that's always a challenge. Every community is at their own point in their journey towards being more inclusive. Norwood is a diverse community as it is. We have close to forty languages spoken in the public school system. So it's a it's a challenge, but I've led that internally and I've led that externally, both from the the sort of more mundane of we want to recruit a more diverse workforce. We have to put the work in to do it. We can't simply say we want to do it and have that materialize. It takes work and it takes resources too. I know that Lexington has a chief equity officer and you recently allocated a budget to that position. I think that's a great move because the resources need to be there more than just the desire. And on the backend of working in the community to make the community more inclusive, to make people feel more inclusive, I've done that community work and that organizational work. In terms of measuring success, it's very difficult to measure success in those efforts. You have to look at where your community is and where your staff are. Putting a specific point on saying we did A and it exactly translated into B can be challenging, but sometimes it's not something that's able to be measured directly and easily, but it's something you know you need to be able to do to be in that space to make your organization work the way you want it to and to reflect your community and to reflect the community's values.
Okay. So Lexington's adopted the MBTA community zoning. And we've exceeded the minimum requirements and several projects are already in the pipeline for approval comprising several hundred units. As town manager, how would you ensure that the town's infrastructure can support the new development while maintaining the quality of life for our residents? And what steps would you take to proactively address potential issues? And how would you keep the community engaged and informed throughout this process?
Sure. Great question. And kudos to Lexington for being among the first in the state to adopt the MBTA's community. It's it's been a challenge in a number of communities. Fortunately, we did get through that in Norwood. Our housing stock is heavily rental based, so it wasn't necessarily the challenge here that it would be for a lot of other communities. In terms of managing the infrastructure, since coming to Norwood, we launched a ten-year, forty-five million dollar water lining project. And nobody likes to know that we're lining the water pipe. They can't see it. Every year at town meeting, I hold up a coupon of what an unlined water pipe works out and I get a hundred percent of the votes every time. But those conversations about water, about sewer, about traffics, about roadwork, and Lexington, by the way, has a healthy budget in those areas. You need to be taking care of basics because if the infrastructure is not adequate to begin with, adding more pressure to it is simply not going to work. Sometimes you have to have those conversations with developers and that again, that involves the planning board, involves a number of other bodies that are we set in this area for the infrastructure? Think you need to be aggressive with developers and ask them for what they're going to contribute to the table if we know they're going to place an impact on your physical infrastructure. Schools can be a little bit more challenging. On the one hand, we know generally an apartment complex of a hundred or two hundred units does not put too many students in the school system. I think that's probably going to be a little bit different in Lexington, which attracts folks for the schools. Just to give you an example of that difference, Lexington at about thirty-four thousand people, I think, has six thousand public school students. We have thirty-one thousand people in Norwood with just over thirty-five hundred public school students. So folks with kids are moved to Lexington. That's going to be more of a concern here than other communities. And the school size issue is not necessarily something that you can simply just solve right off the bat, but if you're right off the bat, but if you're taking care of your physical infrastructure, you need to take care of your school infrastructure. You need to be realistic about redistricting, about looking at where your schools are located and where you're going to see an absorption or where you're going to see an increase. We're undergoing a redistricting plan now. Nobody wants to redistrict, but sometimes you have to take a look at where students are going to go to make sure you're still providing the best possible education, uh, product. In terms of traffic, I often am very open with people that there's not much we can actually do about traffic. That being said, what we can do during construction is you can communicate with residents. You can't communicate enough. Whenever we have a water or sewer project going on, we still physically paper folks in the neighborhood. Cause it doesn't matter how many emails we send out, how many tele calls we send out, how many text messages. We make sure that we put a notice in somebody's mailbox that, hey, on such and such a day, this will be happening. Those sound like basics, but when you ignore those things at the core level, when you ignore the foundation, it creates a lot of challenges down the road for community. Additional housing is going to bring with it additional challenges. I don't think that's, uh, I think everyone is aware of that. I think you can deal with those challenges, knowing that even the growth that we're seeing now, this community and every other community in the Commonwealth faced much larger growth challenges at different points in our history. And they were able to manage through it. I'm confident we'll be able to manage through it. Transparently communicating regularly with people, explaining what the impact on the infrastructure is. Making sure you're, I always jokingly say, you've got to peer review your peer reviews to make sure when somebody's putting an impact on your water, your sewer or your traffic, that we really know what that infrastructure is going to be and we really know what the impact is going to be. Being aggressive with performance bonds for development projects as well. We, uh, we've made a number of zoning changes in Norwood, leading to a couple of hundred housing units. And we know we have several hundred more coming on in a town that already has 5,500 housing units. So, um, I've managed infrastructure challenges in older rural communities where you're depopulating. I've managed them in a dense community that does not have a whole, a whole lot of space. And all we're really doing is redeveloping. So I feel confident I can help Lexington through that process and make sure that we're appropriately informing people and looking at all the angles of our infrastructure and the impact that that growth is going to have. Mainly trying to mitigate the negative impact. We know there's a positive impact as well. To get there, we've got to make sure that the negative impact is not too significant.
Thank you. So the relationship between the town manager and the select board is crucial. How do you envision a truly collaborative partnership where both vision and execution are aligned? And can you share any specific strategies that you would use to foster trust, to ensure clear communication? And to navigate any potential disagreements that would keep the town moving forward?
Sure. I, I guess the way I like to phrase what my ideal for that relationship is at a select board meeting, the board should never be surprised by anything I should, I say, and I should never be surprised by anything the board says. And that can be challenging with five different, uh, personalities and elected officials changing over time. But I should never be here saying, you know, we've looked at this and we've decided that we really think we need a building project here. We're doing this and I don't want anyone ever to be surprised. I just to say, I don't want the board to surprise me with something that I wasn't aware of. Regular, constant communication. I, I don't want to share how often I speak to some of my chairs over the years because then, uh, it'll give everyone an idea, but there have been times where it's, it's a daily 15 or 20 minutes. It's not a formal check-in necessarily. But I communicate regularly with my chair and all my other board, board members. I have one longstanding board member. We have a standing Saturday morning coffee meeting, uh, every single Saturday. You have to speak to people in their language. I'll communicate to board members how they want to, making sure that information is always shared. Of course, across the board and of course, in a transparent fashion, in a fashion that, uh, consistent with the open meeting law, but I need to know from each board member how they want to get information and how they want to get to me, uh, information from me. I'd like to do a, a sort of communication norms meeting as part of my onboarding process to talk about how do you want to give information? How do you want to receive information? Sometimes it's as simple as a quick email or a text message a couple of times a week or a couple of times a day about things that are going on and it's a get back to me if you need me. And sometimes that doesn't work. Sometimes folks, you know, want to respond to a group email. But, um, we'll work on what works best for the board so that the board knows what I'm doing and I know what the board's doing. I like to try to set up regular one-on-one meetings with board members just to have a conversation about what they're thinking, what they're doing. Sometimes it ends up just being a casual conversation. I'd say my Saturday morning coffee chats are probably 20 minutes of business and a half an hour, just sort of what's going on in life. But it's also a chance for me occasionally to share with board members on a one-on-one level, just what I'm dealing with, what I'm going through. Doesn't mean that that's necessarily going to rise to the board to have to take action on something, but it's just, hey, you know, I'm having this, this problem here. And it's just a chance to facilitate that open, uh, conversation, both individually. So that way, when we're all working together, uh, nothing really should be a, uh, a surprise to anyone. And just to add that I, I, as I'm sure, uh, your current town manager is and everyone else here, I'm available all the time. My phone is always on. So if, pick up the phone and call me and I will, um, I will answer.
Thank you. Um, so imagine you're in a select board meeting where a critical and time-sensitive decision needs to be made. The board feels it does not have all the necessary information it was expecting. Tension is rising among, among board members, the staff and the public in attendance. As town manager, how would you navigate this situation to maintain trust and ensure a productive discussion? What immediate steps would you take to ensure that the decision-making process remains focused, constructive and aligned with the town's strategic goals?
Sure. Great question. I guess the, the start of that would be if it's my fault, I think I would own up to it. And I can tell you, having been in the public sector for more than a decade, nobody, I never want to have to own up to screwing something up publicly. But if it's my fault that the board didn't have the information, I'm going to have to own that and say, you know, I apologize. I should have gotten you this. We should have taken care of this. In the event that it's just a consultant's report wasn't ready, um, I'm prepared to step in and facilitate that conversation and, and try to calm the temperature down by saying it's an unfortunate situation. Let's acknowledge that. Acknowledge the frustration folks feel about not having all the information. Acknowledge that it is not an ideal situation and we can have a discussion at a future date about how we're going to make sure that that doesn't happen again. But we're here, we're here to serve the residents of Lexington. And sometimes you do have to make a decision without all the information in front of you. It is not ideal. It is not how you want to do it. But let's have a conversation about what we think is best based on the information that we have. We're fortunate that, uh, you know, a lot of our first responders out there have to make split second decisions. And I often say at a board meeting, we shouldn't have to make split second decisions, but sometimes you have to make decisions on limited, uh, information. Own up to it, accept what it is. If it was something that should have been prepared on my end, I'll own that up to the board too, to say, we should have done this better. Promise you that we'll do it better in the future and, um, try to bring a little bit of levity to the situation if that's helpful. Knowing that we're facing some, uh, difficult challenges and sometimes it's, it's 10, 11 o'clock at night. It's getting late. Tensions are high. People are hungry. It, uh, it happens. It's the nature of local control, uh, in Massachusetts. This is sometimes I think the price we pay for local control, but that's what we want. We want democracy. We want involvement at the local level. It means that it's not always as ideal or well thought out as a process might be at the state or federal level that can go through a little bit more of a linear process.
We try really hard to be done by nine thirty. It doesn't always work, but we try, we try. In municipal leadership, there's often tension between addressing individual resident concerns and upholding town-wide policies or long-term goals. As town manager, how do you balance being responsive to resident complaints? When they are in conflict with the established policies or broader town objectives? Can you share examples when you've had to address a situation where residents' individual interests were adversely affected by town policy? And how did you handle the response?
Sure. Great. Um, great question. I, as I said, I maintain an open door. I maintain an open mind policy. People want to be heard and you have to hear them. This is, we're paid by the residents. The operation is funded by the residents. It's the residents of Lexington's town. So, um, being responsive and respectful of that is important, I think, even if it's a case where somebody has a situation and it's completely contrary to a town bylaw. Making sure that there are clear lines of communication for where that complaint needs to go, or that concern needs to go, that somebody can address it. I will share for some reason in Norwood, one problem we have is when somebody emails six or seven of us, we seem to not be able to respond because it's the manager and the fire chief and the police chief and the board chair and the planning board director. And I think everyone thinks somebody else is doing it. We try to pick up on those and make sure that we are forwarding something to somewhere and that my staff know that we need to get back and respond to somebody, even if it's sorry, we can't do this. I can give us sort of two examples. One is parking and traffic, which is a concern everywhere. We have traffic regulations and every now and then somebody will say, well, when did the town put in a overnight parking ban? 1947. Um, you know, this is not a new process. This is not new to us. We've had it for a long time. This is not some new, uh, new thing, but we established an internal committee to make sure that when my board looks at any traffic or parking recommendations, it's gone through an internal review that it gets a recommendation. It's public works, police, fire, uh, school facilities is, uh, is involved as well. So they get a recommendation. Cause we've had cases before where folks have brought things directly to the board. And they wanted to act on it. And then turns out that maybe a significant number of neighbors in that neighborhood had a different idea of what should have been done. So we changed our process to make sure that they're still getting a chance to be heard. Even if it's a, no, sorry, the bylaw doesn't allow this. No, sorry, we're, we're recommending against it. You make sure folks have a chance to, uh, to be heard. If anyone's read the Globe today, Norwood has been in the news a little bit lately for, uh, shutting down an ice cream stand as the story goes. It's a little dramatized in the press, but we received a number of complaints about, uh, somebody selling ice cream, uh, that they were making at home, which there's a state regulation in the CMR that doesn't allow you to do that. We had to send a letter, was not well received, even though it was a very, um, very warmly written letter for an enforcement letter, no fines, just, hey, there's a regulation that says you can't do this. Please stop or come in and see us and we'll find a way. We can make it happen. Well, it's since gone viral and it's been, um, a little bit more drama than is necessary. But that's sometimes the responsibility that I have and that my staff have is that we have rules and we have to enforce them. We'll advise you the democratic process to change some of these rules. Uh, but we're here to make sure that the rules are followed and I may agree with somebody that a rule, uh, isn't the best rule in the world and I may not like it, but these are the rules and we have an established process that respects citizen input to change any of these rules.
Thank you.
So, um, economic development in Lexington involves a vibrant downtown, a tourism base and larger commercial entities. As town manager, how would you support an economic development strategy that encourages local small businesses and attractions? While also pursuing opportunities to bring in larger companies that could boost the town's tax base and employment? Can you share an example, further? That's wanting to get crossed up on this one. Uh, further in April of 2025, Lexington will celebrate the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Lexington. We have been planning, uh, for over two years for what is shaping up to be not a local, regional or state event, but a national or international event. And we have faced and continue to face significant challenges, especially with funding and logistics. Can you talk about a strategy to help move this single one-time event forward while balancing all the other things on the town manager plate while working with local, regional, state and federal partners?
Great. Thank you. A comprehensive question. I guess first on the, on the economic development piece, I've negotiated nearly a billion dollars worth of TIF agreements with Moderna Therapeutics and FM Global to force them 500 company. I feel confident in my ability to work with the team here in Lexington and the board to continue to attract those larger commercial clients that are going to provide a significant amount of the tax base. I know that I think Lexington's residential tax base is 85%, uh, residents that make up 85% of the tax base. Norwood, we're very fortunate. It's 75% of resident. The rest is commercial. So those large commercial tenants, I'm going to make a significant difference in the taxes that residents pay. They bring their own level of vibrancy and money into the economy. You can do large-scale economic development and downtown development. One of them is more about being open and fostering conversations and making sure you're attracting the kind of companies that you want to your town. Your downtown development that I've been doing it for, uh, more than a decade, including in some rural communities, you do need to invest. You need to look at, um, hosting your events. You need to look at your infrastructure. You have a beautiful center here in Lexington. I'm looking forward to having lunch down here, uh, when this is over with, uh, over today. And that can be challenging because you have existing small businesses. You have other folks who want to come in. You want to foster residents. You want to foster, um, residents using the downtown. You, uh, need to make sure you have your zoning set. We recently redid our downtown zoning a couple of years ago to bring a little bit more mixed use into Norwood. Um, we've got to take one more whack at it. We're, we're talking to a few developers who need a few changes to bring some large projects to downtown to bring that vibrancy. I recently was nominated as a, uh, a fellow with the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, looking at vibrant communities. So that's a training program I'll be going through over the next six months, looking at how to bring vibrancy to our communities and bring some of these challenges, community vibrancy, sustainability and housing together. Cause they're all together and you can't look at them in a truly bifurcated way, even though we handle economic development here. We handle downtown viability here. We handle housing over here. They're all interrelated and you have to look at it that way. In terms of tourism, I worked in, uh, the town of Adams, Massachusetts, where, uh, there were a tourism heavy economy and Northern Berkshire County was shifting to tourism from a previous manufacturing economy. There's a 50-year economic development project called the Greylock Land that is finally opening in just a year or two that I had to make sure I continued to shepherd through very, very difficult economic, uh, downtown and some difficult fiscal concerns there. So I'm familiar with tourism and trying to attract folks to the community and how you can build a tourism economy. And I think it's great because it's a leg that a lot of towns don't have. We certainly don't in Norwood. I think it's great, but, uh, trying to get folks from outside the area to visit Norwood as a tourist destination. We know it's on our inventory that it's not likely something to have. Terms of your 250th, I'd be looking forward to help out any way I can. Recent experience, we held a 150th anniversary. Number of events throughout the years culminated in not only our gala event, which we have done one every 25 years, going back probably a hundred years. It was very important that that go off without a hitch. Our big signature event was also bringing the Boston Pops to Norwood. So we brought the Boston Pops right downtown and had them play right on the Norwood Town Common. Very expensive proposition. It cost us nearly $300,000. We were able to raise all of that publicly. I would say some of the detailed costs and other associated costs were not necessarily raised, um, as a charitable account, but that's the way that the town was able to chip in. So not that I'm a great fundraiser or work in development. I'm sure there are people that can do that better than I here. But I have some experience fundraising for these important, critical, uh, community events. Particularly one that is going to have lasting and national significance for Lexington. So I would be willing to jump in and help out any way I can, having some recent experience with them.
So Lexington is known for its strong financial management, but with rising costs and increasing demands for service, it's an increasingly difficult balance. As town manager, how would you approach long-term financial planning to ensure fiscal sustainability? While still making the necessary investments in infrastructure, services and community initiatives? And can you give us an example of when you had to make difficult financial decisions that involve balancing competing priorities?
Sure. Um, I guess I'll start with the end of that. In terms of having to make difficult financial decisions, uh, when I served as a town administrator for Adams, Massachusetts, I took over a time when they were in fiscal distress that they weren't necessarily aware of. They had, uh, had a declining economy, declining population and declining fund balances. Um, I had to make staff layoffs. I have not had to do it since. I hope I don't have to do it again. I've always said I never wanted to be in a position to do it, but the financial situation was that I had to cut almost 10% of the full-time staff over the course of a couple of difficult budget cycles. They had drained their free cash. They had drained their stabilization fund, uh, a series of poor decisions had led to us being there. They weren't necessarily aware of it. My first year budget deficit in Adams was, um, about eight percent of the total budget. Um, and because there were two regional school districts, not that the schools are a solution to that, it makes it even more complicated that we had to make some significant cuts. The, we had the department of revenue come in after a couple of years and sort of evaluate that. Cause I had a question to myself. It's look, I've been making some really drastic cuts here. I mean, we were slashing everything and I had to know that it was worth it in the end, that we're getting somewhere and they came in and they, uh, they wrote a report and they credited me with that. We built up fund balances. We were able to pay off some debt early and we're able to structure them so that they've had a couple of easier years. It's never easy in a rural community where you have a population decline going on. But they were able to make some difficult decisions, uh, and they were able to continue to manage. We had to close a school while I was out there. We had a three-school regional district, one middle high school, two elementary schools, and I had to lead the charge to, um, decide whether it was the school in Adams or the school in Cheshire that closed. Not a pleasant conversation, but it had to be done and it was in the best interest of the district as a whole to do that. So I have no problem making difficult financial decisions. I hope I don't have to do them, but I have a wide, uh, wide background in doing so. In terms of long-range planning, it's important to put first things first and sometimes that is not the most interesting thing. I always look every year to see what problems are we solving in our budget? Because there's some problems that are going to be there for a while. Lexington does great at that. You've done additional contributions to your pension fund. Your OPEB fund is in great shape. We've done some similar things in Norwood. We've dumped additional money to the pension fund. I think our OPEB fund, it's relatively small. It's up around four and a half or $5 million. It was around a half a million dollars when I got to Norwood. We are going to have our second highest free cash year ever. We are going to have, our stabilization fund is almost double its highest ever point. And we've done this while continuing to grow our operation, while continuing to invest in our school system. We had our first ever operational override in 2018 in Norwood, which they have never done before. And, uh, we've since had a successful override for our middle school project. And as I think everyone here knows, school projects are, um, quite, uh, quite expensive and never really match up with what the initial cost estimates were. But I've been able to sort of manage through that, make sure we have plenty of money in the bank. And we're facing some financial headwinds in my current community, like a lot of towns are. But we're facing them with a lot of money in the bank, some of it by luck and some of it by design. So it's looking out and making sure you're solving those really difficult but uninteresting things in the budget that you have to take care of. And just in a couple of specific examples, when we built our override, we built in a very conservative fashion. We knew we needed to balance the budget. We wanted it to last five years. We wanted to make some investments in the school system. I put money into roads and into our snow and ice budget. And everyone said, that's a little boring that that's what you're asking the taxpayers for. And the answer is yes, because we were consistently overspending on snow and ice, which you're allowed to do, but to the tune of $700,000 a year, that's just draining our free cash. We need to be realistic with ourselves about what we're going to have to spend in our budget. Take care of those problems first to put you in the best financial position down the road to make a decision. We had zero vehicles in the budget when I got to Norwood. We now have over a million dollars in the budget for rolling stock vehicles because we know we can say it's a capital discussion every year about replacing police cruisers. At the end of the day, if we're going to have a police department, we're going to need to replace police cruisers every year. DPW needs a certain number of vehicles every year. So everyone likes the fun, more flashy stuff. Everyone wants to add staff. We want to do all these fun things and we should, because we're here to provide services to the public. And it's the services that they want, that they let us know through their elected leadership. But we have to put first things first and solve some of the more boring issues in the budget. Even if it means we're not able to grow somewhere else because we have to take care of something here. You can also grow programs slowly and do it in a way that's fiscally responsible, that builds out a program over time, knowing that, hey, let's not rush in and buy five of these and do this program. Let's start it slow and let's grow it over time and mitigate the impact on the budget. Learn about the program as we're going and get to where we want to be. If it takes us five years, that's fine. I know we'd like to be there in a year, but sometimes you just need to grow programs slowly, smartly and methodically.
All right. Thank you for those responses. As we get toward the close of this, is there anything else that you would like to share with us? Or do you have any questions for us?
Just one or two small things that I could sort of make a closing statement if you'd like.
Yes.
Collective bargaining, I mentioned briefly earlier. I have 11 separate unions that I bargain with. I've done bargaining on both sides of the Commonwealth and in Maine. I also serve in the state's Joint Labor Management Committee where I mediate police and fire disputes throughout the Commonwealth. And I was nominated early in this year as the vice chair of the Joint Labor Management Committee. Which they were bringing back after time of not having a vice chair, which requires the ascent of statewide police and fire unions as well as our own municipal association. So I think that's something I'm particularly proud of. It's work that I'm continuing to do and enjoy doing. And I think it showcases my ability to bring people together, to be able to sit down at the table. And really to mediate is what we do on the, on the JLMC. It's a very formal mediation, but it's an intense and formal mediation process. And just with that, I think I'll close. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Lexington is a phenomenal community. It is well run. You have a phenomenal crop of candidates. My start in local government, as I mentioned earlier, was as a student representative to my school committee. I was going to town meeting before I was 18. I grew up in the town of Randolph, Massachusetts. Very proud of that. I do love my hometown. Learned a lot of good lessons. I often tell people, you know, Randolph did this, here's why we shouldn't do this. Lessons about what to do and not to do for a community. I was going to town meeting before I was 18. I know town meeting is a big deal here in Lexington. You have a town meeting members association, which I find fascinating. So there are some towns out there where we're worrying about quorum and then here it is, you guys have a whole association with dues and everything. And I get the frustration that comes with that democratic process, but it's what got me into local government. I don't know if I would have gotten into local government if I lived anywhere else. Your relationship, your focus on your school department is also something that again, got me into local government. I never felt the calling to be a teacher. I don't think I'd be particularly good at it. But I, education in a lot of ways is what got me into local government. I work closely with our school department. I've taken our senior civics class to Washington DC. I found grant funding and sometimes it's just money out of the budget for other things in the schools. I fully believe in that integration of the town and the schools that it's the most important or the most necessary thing that we do. And the fact that Lexington prides itself on such a great school system is something that would be particularly is intriguing to me and is enticing to me, as well as your focus on democracy, as frustrating as that is. That's why we have local control. That's what makes Massachusetts unique. And I think if you look at Lexington with all 70 plus boards and committees and a very, very active and engaged town meeting, you have an incredible quality of life. So it's proof that that system works here in Massachusetts. And I'd be more than happy to have the opportunity to help contribute to that.
Thank you so much. And thanks for taking the time to share your insights and experiences with us today. On behalf of the whole board, I just want to express our appreciation for your thoughtful responses. And the clarity with which you address the questions and your perspective on the challenges and opportunities facing Lexington is valuable to us as we make our decision on the next town manager. But that will, again, thank you for your
All right. Thank you.
Colleagues, we'll take a brief break and then we'll resume in just a couple of moments.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony.
Pleased to meet you.
So I'm going to start over what I said. Okay. Thank you, Kim. I'm going to bring this meeting back to order. Want to reiterate our collective thanks to the Town Manager Search Screening Committee for the many hours they put in over the summer in order to facilitate this process. And thank you Jill Chair and Mark, who was also on the committee for all the work and effort that went into this. So obviously we just in the committee, I thought I thanked them. Many of them here, thank you. I, we just interviewed three candidates. Our, our next phase in this process is for the board to deliberate on the candidates. We do not have to make a decision today. We do not have to deliberate right now. I want to see where the board is at from decision making perspective. We have scheduled another meeting if necessary for September 4th, which is next Wednesday evening. So I just really want to get a idea of where people are at with their decision making, information gathering, feedback. I will say from my own perspective, having been on the search screening committee for the prior town manager search. When we got to this point, I felt very comfortable having had already met the candidates twice at this point, having had all the information digested for several weeks. This time I'm feeling a little less ready, given the fact that I just met these three folks today and I just read the paperwork in the last 48 hours. So it's a big decision. So I just wanted to see where everyone else is at. I'm sort of on the fence with needing a little bit more time. So if we can just go around and see where people are at. I'm happy to deliberate now. Everyone else feels that it's, it's better use of our time, so.
Well, obviously Mark and I have had, you know, a significant times heads up on the other three of you. So I will go with whatever the board wants to do.
So I want to make two comments. One first is I want to reflect for each of the communities or current employers of the candidates we had. One of you is going to lose a good first. And, and that makes me feel good about our process. But then I'll, I'll take a cue from two of our respondents who said, sometimes you need to pause. Take a break, a breath and think about it. I'm with you Doug, in that we were not part of the screening committee. So over the past three days since late Friday, I've been trying to look at lots of information and I'd like to digest it more. I would like for us to have a little bit of a discussion now just to share reflections. But I'd like to take that away and come back for a deeper deliberation.
So I would like to take a pause. And I'll share some comments now to start the comment session. Thank you again to the committee for, for the candidate, for all their work and for bringing these candidates forward. What I will start with is an observation that we had three candidates here that are in different places in terms of their involvement with municipal government. We had one who has sat on this side of the table where we sit and hasn't necessarily been in that type of chair for an extended period of time. We had two managers that have varying lengths of service in community government who have more of an internal side sitting at that table in a different community. So they have a different community experience. But the part that concerns me, and I'm going to kind of state it as what I'm perceiving is a little bit of an issue that's been floating since late Friday night is that we did have an internal candidate that was not in the room today. And I understand that that decision was made by the, the selection committee. And I'm trying to respect that decision, but I think that would have given us a third perspective into the type of people that do this work day in and day out and what they observe. What we heard was from people two who have experienced actually doing, I'll say the down in the down in the weeds work every day. And they, they referenced a lot of, well, in my, in this community, we've done it this way, in that community, we've done it that way. We had someone who has a little bit of work doing it down in the weeds, but sitting on this side of the table managing it. And it would have been interesting to me to hear the perspective of the person who's actually doing it within our community. And one of that, and I, and I state that because I was listening very closely and when our questions asked, as town manager, how would you? Very rarely did the candidates answer talking about the future and their dreams and what they might do here. The answers, more often than not, they spoke about the communities where they were. So we were getting a lot of insight into how things have worked in other communities and no two communities are like, nor should they be. But it would have been interesting to get the perspective from someone who actually works here, understands our internal dynamics and all the rest of that. So I just want to put that out there. Ms. Lucente, I know you sent us an email that said that you had had a conversation with senior staff. I don't know, I don't believe we got any comments from them through the office, but I was wondering if you'd be willing to summarize for us since we can't talk about this individually because of open meeting law, what the kind of overall theme of that, of that feedback was?
I'm pausing now because I don't want to share the feedback because I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm not going beyond our agenda today. But saying as much as I can and comfortable saying, there was, there was some disappointment and frustration amongst members of the senior management team. In their perception of how the process worked. I will say in talking to the consultants that we hired for the process. They also felt that the process is what we had followed and agreed to. So I think there's two different perspectives on it. Having talked to both senior managers and the folks responsible for the seeing us through this process.
Okay. Thank you for that. I mean, I will say I have been the one at this table advocating from the beginning that if there was an internal candidate, I did want to see that candidate come forward to the final interviews. And I know Ms. Hay, we had a lot of back and forth and you pushed back that I believe, and I don't want to put words in your mouth for you, that you felt that was giving that person a pass. But for the reasons that I just stated, I think it would have given us a different perspective today as we evaluated these candidates. And I think that's really important. I, you know, I think we have three candidates in front of us that, that offer a lot, a lot of different strengths. Weaknesses and I think there's also, or perceived weaknesses. And I think there's also going to be a learning curve there. And as we talked about, it's not going to be a curve. It's going to be a learning kind of ejection to get kind of like way up high and understand this, this community because we're very high functioning. That being said, I will leave my comments there for now, but I'm definitely awake to think about this.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Sandy.
So having had the opportunity to see the candidates last week and, and and hear interestingly enough, considerably maybe more information in the previous interviews than we heard today. I am also in that camp though of thinking that we should be taking a little bit of a pause because when we think about, we're making a decision probably for the next 10 years of at least of, of what the town's going to be experiencing. And a week of thinking through and understanding, you know, the trade offs is well worth the time. And, you know, I do think, as I've mentioned before in a previous select board meeting, one of the, one of the best things that you can do in terms of a hiring process is check some references with other folks, you know, there's only so much that can come across an interview table or written, a written response. And there's a lot of value in, in hearing how other folks have interacted with these people in the past. And there hasn't, there hasn't been enough time to sort of do that adequately, I would, I would suggest.
Okay. And I do, I do think Mr. Pat, you mentioned you want to provide some initial feedback. We'll open it up for any of the feedback on the candidates that anyone wants to sort of share with our colleagues so we can sit on it. The week, it sounds like we're not going to be making a decision today. That's what I'm getting the sense of the board. And I think, you know, if there's parting thoughts, we all want to sort of go back and reflect on, I think now is, now would be an appropriate time. Anyone want to, anyone want to add on, Ms. Barry? You know, she had some.
So, so one of the reasons why I wanted to pause was coming into today, having read the written documentation, perusing online materials, there were questions in my mind about each of the candidates. And some of those were assuaged during the presentation and sort of meeting someone as opposed to just reading. But that process has led me to want to dig more on certain of those issues. So that's part of why I wanted to pause. And I think Mr. Sandy is absolutely right. This is now our opportunity to check some references. And, and dig while we're formulating our decision. And I think it's also really important for us to exchange. I'm not sure I have a lot at the moment to say, though I if someone else starts off ideas that might spark some observations, the right. And I guess I am focused on following the process we agreed to. No matter what degree of surprise I may have had of how we got here. I think this is what we mapped out and as a group that decided to pursue.
Ms. A, did you want to add any feedback?
I don't, I don't really think so. I mean, I think at this point, obviously, you know, the, the committee has brought you these three. So we feel that these are the three, the three best candidates that we saw and read and met through the process. And at this point, I really think it's up to the collaborative decision making of, of the five of us. So I think I would prefer to wait until everybody's had the chance to kind of feel that they've really had a chance to absorb and digest the materials.
Mr. Sandy.
Ms. Hay, though, at the beginning of the session today at nine o'clock, you said that you might be willing to provide a little bit of background of some of the other interviews that we've had. I don't know if you, if you're still thinking that's a reasonable thing to do or with whether that was in response to questions that folks had. I wasn't quite sure what your thoughts were.
You know, I was simply thinking if we, if we've got into particular evaluations and discussions that I have some notes from the evaluations and discussions of the screening committee that would potentially, you know, add into a specific question. But again, the, the committee did not write up a report with specific recommendations. So I don't feel it's really something I can do to, to summarize everything that 11 different people said.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to follow up on that comment. I wasn't quite sure. So your thought is if there is a question from the other four, that there may be some clarification, that might be possible. Okay, thank you.
And, you know, we also could, if there is a particular question from the question list last week that one of the board members wanted to know. Between my notes and your notes, I think we probably could put together roughly what, what any one of the candidates had said in response to that particular question as a rough outline.
I will just add personally, I was very impressed by the three candidates in different ways for each of them. And I think what I'm, what I'm spending my week reflecting on is the political, technical, and I'll say communication, you know, with, you know, what, you know, those are sort of the three main buckets in my head of, you know, fit, what's a good fit for Lexington? That's really what we gotta, we have to find out and we have to assess as a board. Because we do want this to be a longer term play. This is not a you know, one year contract that we're, this is, this is a long road and a long game and hopefully a long and wonderful relationship with the town and someone helping us leave this town. So, you know, that's, that's sort of where I'm, I'm at from trying to assess the three candidates and those, and those buckets. And so I mean, what is Lexington? Best fit? Or what I see is Lexington's future fit with that candidate and their style and their technical skills and their, you know, communication skills. Mr. Sandy.
So if what I'm hearing from the board is that they'd like to pause a little bit today and we have some time on the agenda left today. I'm wondering if you might think it's appropriate to talk a little bit about a question that I've been asking myself a lot lately. Whichever of the candidates that we choose to be town manager, what process, we're just talking about process, what process would we want to go through in terms to most effectively onboard, onboard that town manager? So I was wondering if there might be a conversation about that. And I know each of you have had some experience onboarding previous town managers and, and I would be interested to think about that because if we're delaying the decision, we may not have enough time to talk through the onboarding thing later on.
Yeah, it is here and the schedule, next steps, et cetera. So it's appropriate to ask. And it is the fourth item. So you've moved on, you've moved on to item number four on the, on the agenda for us. I I, I think the delay of a week won't be too impactful, but I think your question more is, you know, what is our plan for whomever is selected for the role? We did discuss with John Ward. We did discuss with John Wortman at our retreat, sort of ownership, and, and I will revisit that, but unfortunately I don't have it in front of me this moment, but we talked a little bit about ownership of various pieces of that onboarding. Who is going to take on which, you know, elements, I believe Mr. Pato is going to help with some of the getting up to speed on like the high school project as an example and other maybe fiscal policies. I believe Ms. Barry was assigned to help with the tour to Lexington. And I can't remember what the rest of the three of us were. I don't know why those two only stood out, but we were going to do that. I think what's important to have happen though, is to, that we do have a sort of at least two-week framework so that there is some structure around the first two weeks of, at, at a recommendation I got as recently as yesterday about, you know, how, how we should make that two weeks look so that the person isn't coming in and just saying, well, I guess I'll meet with this. So we're prioritizing sort of what that first two weeks look like. And then letting that person do their work. I anticipate that we would not have a new town manager before October 1st, right? We would, we would already have a town manager that's working up to October 1st. So we have a, about a month to work through what that's going to look like and get some board agreement on that. What that would look like too. And I think we're happy to add that to an agenda to have a shell or a skeleton of the schedules. So we're all sort of on the same page and to revisit our individual roles in that process, if that's fair.
So if I'm understanding correctly, your, your, your expectation is, is that whatever candidate is selected would end up having at least some time with each of the select board members.
Absolutely. That would definitely be part of the very start of the two-week schedule that would, would be developed as well as, you know, again strategically thinking through what, you know, what assets, what departments, what topics we want to bring that person up to speed on. Cause I think each of us individually are saying, well, when they get here, the first thing I want them to learn is X, you know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking Ms. Barry, they need to come to the 250th meeting the next day that they get here. But that may not be, you know, on the schedule or not, but I think that's the type of thing we're going to, you know, while the, the person's getting their feet wet.
I, another sort of thing that I think about in terms of onboarding somebody, there's one thing about sitting in a, in a room, talking to somebody. There's another thing about driving around town and but I do think there's sort of a, a, a sort of tour of the relevant parts of Lexington and you will have a very different impression of things when you're seeing them than when you're talking about them.
And Ms. Barry may say, you know what? I want Mr. Sandy to show the solar array to the new town managers or whatever else. Ms. Hay?
I was just going to say, we also need to take into account the timing and in all likelihood, it is going to be close to a fall town meeting when this person comes on board and we will need to also accommodate the, to the best of our ability, getting them up to speed to at least understand what's going on and where, you know, where we are with that. So that may change some of that two weeks, depending on how close it is to the actual town meeting.
Yes. Any other comments or discussion on the schedule or next steps? So we will reconvene on Wednesday, September 4th at 6:30 PM. And we are going to have that as a hybrid meeting because Mr. Pato may not be physically available at that time. That, that is our scheduled plan for now. Our room is in use that night, which is
So recreation meeting is in this room.
In this room. Okay. So maybe there's a room mix-up, but we'll, we'll figure that out over the next
6:30.
6:30 PM on Wednesday, September 4th.
And that's the only agenda item?
That'll be the only agenda item for that meeting. Yeah. I mean, if there is a, by, you know, some consent item that has to get handled, that's, you know, we'll, we'll throw it out, but we're not going to add any other topics. Okay. All right. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? There are none. The motion passes five to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your time and participation today.